Good e- Good evening, everyone. Today is April 16th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. We are at the City Hall Council Chambers at 100 Polk Avenue, Cape Canaveral, Florida, for our Cape Canaveral City Council regular meeting. I call this meeting to order. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, council, city staff and partners and all who took the time today to join here at City Hall and those who are live streaming. If you do have a public comment or desire to submit a public comment, I want to encourage you, please go and pick up a speaker card at the front and provide that to our Brevard County Sheriff's Officer. And we will make sure you're heard during the public participation portion of the meeting. And with that, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
All are here for the council. Council, this time, approval of agenda as written or with amendments. Are there any changes that we'd like to see? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, and you will see that on item number two.
Okay.
It's highlighted. They gave us a copy of that. Okay, so concerns regarding alleged potential change, alleged to potential, conflicts of interest related to the former council member, strike the former council member with the applicant's involvement in past city council discussion regarding pickleball versus tennis. So striking alleged, adding potential. Striking related to the former council member, adding with.
So this is to amend the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I think this is for item number one or two on the consent?
Two.
Okay, I think-
Number one, actually, Ms. Jackson's.
It's number one?
It is number one, thank you.
I think what we'll want to do is, we can move quickly now that you've introduced it. When we get to the consent agenda item, pull that.
Okay.
Or if we can serve that as everything and maybe that results in it not needing to be pulled, but.
On the consent agenda?
Yes, I think we'll pull it, discuss the changes, and then adopt it, that individual item.
And are we looking at anything else on the consent agenda at this time?
I will ask here after public participation if anybody wants to pull either one of those items.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So those are items one and two. I think we're anticipating a change. Are there any items that we want to change the order? Can start there. We okay with the order of the agenda?
Yes, I needed to move agenda item nine to combine it into the discussion with agenda item seven.
Okay, so you're voting or recommending taking informational item number nine and incorporating it as a part of discussion item number seven?
Yes.
Okay, I think items seven, they are the same topic, so I would say that we'll be prepared to reference that-
Thank you.
-when number seven comes up. Are there any other changes? Council?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second to approve it as written. I will just say, so that we can see, is during the report section, I do want to discuss in this very end after discussion item number eight and give an update on the special meeting action items around community development code enforcement related to Jackson Avenue and Fillmore Avenue, which we discussed at the last meeting in January. So in the, at the end, I will like to discuss a few things with the council during reports. And that's all I have. We have the motion on the table and the second. Any further discussion? To approve it as written. See none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right, agenda is approved as written. This time, presentation and interviews portion of the meeting. We are at 6:06 PM. The first is a presentation of proclamation declaring Friday, April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day. Do we have a representative here? In a moment, I will read the proclamation. Come down, join you if you'd like to take a photo together and then have a few words. Thank you. Okay. Official proclamation of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, for our home and fuel for our fire, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the City of Cape Canaveral is celebrating its 35th year as a recognized tree city. Now therefore, I, Wes Morrison, Mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day in the City of Cape Canaveral and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed and sealed this 16th day, April 2024. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for inviting the Florida Forest Service here to accept your proclamation and congratulations on your 35 years. Just to put that in perspective, you've celebrated Arbor Day more than some people in this room might have celebrated a birthday. So congratulations and good, I wish you well on your tree giveaway for your Arbor Day celebration, and thank you for your commitment to urban forestry and preserving your urban trees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, for anybody listening here tonight or at home, we will be having a tree giveaway on April 26. That is a Friday. That is on the actual Arbor Day from 11 to 3 PM here at City Hall. We will have 30 baby gumbo limbo trees available on a first-come, first-come, first-serve basis for residents of the City of Cape Canaveral. We'll just need proof of residency upon arrival. You can walk up, bike up, drive up. We'll be here out front with the tent, so we'll be doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. We do love our trees. Okay. The next item is a presentation by the United States Green Building Council to present the City of Cape Canaveral with the distinguished leadership in energy and environmental design certification.
Hello again.
Zach.
So today is a very historic moment for the City of Cape Canaveral and one that I'm proud to say that we have achieved. Tonight, the city will be achieving, or receiving, I should say, a LEED Silver Certification for the United States Green Building Council, one of the most esteemed green building organizations in the world, I'd say. This process began almost two years ago to the day, and we will be rightfully recognizing Hannah Teague, who's here with us tonight. She was the intern that helped complete this very arduous and comprehensive audit process that helps to showcase where we're doing well, maybe where we need to do a little better in our sustainability and resilience program. This is a certification that many might know for buildings specifically, but this was a program to certify the entirety of the City of Cape Canaveral, which is very cool. So with that, I will let Hannah come up. She, I'll never forget, I was forwarded an email by Todd. Hannah reached right out to Todd for an internship with the city. She went straight to the top, and we accepted to have her on as an intern, starting in 2022. And about a month later, we started this process, and I don't know if she knew what she was getting into, but she put in well over 500 hours of work to help us get this certification. And she even continued on with the city after she got a full-time job with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection over in Tampa. And she, to the moment she said, you know, she got the project, "We're going to get this. I'm going to see it through to the end," and she saw it through to the end, and she's here tonight to help us receive this. So with that, I'll just let Hannah come up real quick and say a few words.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. So Zach said, my name's Hannah Teague, and I'm an environmental specialist with the Florida DEP. However, almost two years ago today, I started my sustainability internship here with the City of Cape Canaveral. And as Zach said, we think it took about 500 hours, from collecting data to working with stakeholders to writing a lot of assessments, but we finally did it, and I thank all of you guys. I know that, not only to say to the city council, but also to every, you know, resident that I worked very closely with, people not only here in this building at City Hall, but with the public utilities and also with people in the C5 building, and everyone here is extremely welcoming and very kind-hearted, and I couldn't have done it without the support of everyone here. So thank you guys very much for helping me start my environmental career. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I want to introduce Tara from the United States Green Building Council to give the city council their certification.
Thank you, Zachary. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Morrison and the members of the Cape Canaveral Council, it's an honor to be here today with you to celebrate this city's Silver LEED certification with the United States Green Building Council. I'm sure that most of you are familiar with the individual buildings certified to LEED, but what does it mean to certify entire city? The LEED for Cities rating system was built by and for local governments pursuing a more sustainable, resilient, and equitable future. It is intended to serve as a roadmap and a guide for local efforts while accelerating progress at the jurisdictional scale, excuse me. LEED for Cities provides an evaluation of where you are today, addressing topics as diverse as renewable energy, solid waste management, land use planning, transportation, air and water quality, and many other factors contributing to quality of life. Cape Canaveral joins a strong community of 24 Florida cities, towns, and counties committed to sustainability excellence in LEED for Cities. That is the most in the world, by the way, so Florida is definitely excelling in this area. Today, we are here to celebrate the Cape Canaveral, excuse me, celebrate that Cape Canaveral has reached a big milestone. Congratulations on achieving LEED for Cities Silver Certification. We need more leaders like you taking action on these critical community issues. A few examples of areas where you led the way include exceptional work on renewable energy implementation, resilience planning through vulnerability and capacity assessments, and exceeding water efficiency benchmarks. Compared to your peers, your city generates fewer greenhouse gas emissions per capita and keeps water waste to a minimum. Cape Canaveral scored highest in water efficiency and energy and greenhouse gas emissions categories. Cape Canaveral's focus on maintaining relatively lower greenhouse gas emissions while holding energy use to an efficient standard reflects the county's, excuse me, the city's commitment to a low-carbon future. Your efforts will not only help create safer, healthier, more efficient, and resilient places, but also ensure everyone has access to a better way of life. This work only made possible because of the committed people and partners. I'd like to commend your staff team, Zachary Echols, Kyle Harris, Alexis Miller, and Hannah Teague, of course. 500 hours is a heavy lift for committing to this process and driving that local effort. My deepest appreciation goes to the mayor and council for recognizing the importance of this work and committing to leadership on sustainability and resilience. With top-down leadership support and buy-in cross-departmentally, the results of this effort can be transformative. I'd also like to acknowledge Bank of America for their continued support of our program. Cape Canaveral participated in our local government leadership program, and the bank has supported this initiative since 2019, with more than $3 million in investments. So thank you, Bank of America. In closing, the U.S. Green Building Council is here. We're ready to support you as you prioritize investments and shift into implementation. We are excited to be a part of your journey. Thank you for your leadership, and congratulations to you all.
So we have the certification here. Fun fact, this is not the final certification. The real one is still in the mail. We have 10 of these certificates coming that we can hang around the city or give to council members as they wish, and then we also have a glass inscribed plaque that's coming that we can hang at a city facility of our choosing for the public to see. So with that, if you guys would like to come and take a group photo with Hannah, it will be good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. This time, that concludes presentations and interviews. We are at the public participation portion of the meeting. Do have some speaker cards. If you intend to speak, please fill one out and bring it forward. And then for those who are listening at home, if you'd like to participate, we ask that you please raise your hand. We have three minutes here, so when the light goes green, three minutes begins. Yellow is about 30 seconds left, and we ask that you please conclude it when the red light goes on. And with that, thank you all for willing to participate and submit cards. The first one that I have here is Mr. John Benton.
Okay, I'm here for a request to get my code reduction hearing. We've been through this, man. You had a code reduction here, and you found me guilty of living in a warehouse. I testified that I didn't live in there. I lived on Tyler. And then you called Kevin Mann, the deacon at the Spaceman Storage and the deacon at the Presbyterian Church, and he got up and testified after I testified that I lived in the warehouse. He didn't have anybody living in his warehouse, but his son was living in the warehouse next door, mini warehouse, the same zoning, and he was on the sex offender site resident. Why did you go after him? He can't live in there. He's a sex offender, and it says residency. And you find me guilty, and you wouldn't let me defend myself after he did that. The only, why don't you ask the lawyer why I couldn't defend myself that night? This probably never happened in Florida anywhere. It's like a judge, man. You think a judge is going to let somebody throw somebody under the bus and not let them defend themselves? You don't want to give me the code reduction hearing because you don't want to play that meeting again. That board's gone, everybody in that room, but Brian Palmer is gone, so they'll have to play that meeting again. And then it moves up, and everybody, all these citizens can hear that meeting, laughing and mocking and taunting me, referring to me as a cookie that crumbled. I told you in the first year, when Mr. Randall's at the very first council meeting, I don't know the guy, but when I get up and tell him what's happening, and then what the code board did, he goes, "I know you don't live in the warehouse, John. You live on Tyler." Well, why did that even happen in the first place? He lost his election, first time in 31 years because of that, because he trespassed me out in front, he trespassed me out here holding the sign that Judge Crawford asked me to bring here because you guys caused the problem. He wanted me to cover up a word on it. I covered up now with toys, and now it goes viral. It's in the paper. Look at this guy out here with a toy sign. Got the nasty word underneath it, boobs. You aren't ever going to, I told you, I told him I was going to come into these meetings when Mr. Randall said I wasn't going to trash anybody if they aren't there, and I told him, I said, "I'm going to trash Kevin Mann and his church until he comes in and apologizes to everybody, including the deputies, for lying to them for four months. Four months. I don't have anybody in there." And I brought the, when I came to the council meeting, I spent $60 on have somebody blow up the pictures of those people homeless, big color pictures, so everybody can see it. And they were left in there until the FBI got involved, and when they got involved, those people were gone. You left them in there, yeah, John would go up there and take care of it himself, take the law in his own hand. I just ignored them. I ignored them for, that's how, I ignored those people for 10 years.
Thank you. The next card-
You don't have anything to say? You aren't going to let that car defend itself?
John, we're done. Thank you. Ms. Mary Mascara. Whenever you're ready. Take your time.
Good evening, Mayor Morrison and councilmembers. My name is Mary Mascara. I'm the vice chair of the Culture and Leisure Service Advisory Board. Our board had voted unanimously before the last council meeting to recommend Angela Raymond to the council for its approval. It was disappointing how some at the last council meeting handled the process to approve or not approve Ms. Raymond as a member of our board. Some comments about Ms. Raymond were negative and out of line from what is typically the case for a potential advisory board candidate. Usually, those comments are centered on the candidate's experience, willingness to learn and serve, and desire to volunteer. The mayor also indicated he would vote no if there was a vote because he wanted to change the process of selecting a board member and open it to more people, starting with a vacancy that Ms. Raymond had been slated to fill. This essentially moves the goalpost after the game has started. The appropriate time to change the process is before the start of the next vacancy process. The fact that so many folks volunteer here is one of the many things that makes Cape Canaveral a great place to live. The last thing we should be doing is making it more difficult for those so willing to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Shannon Roberts.
Thank you. I've got six things I wanted to go real quickly here. First of all, I want to thank Mia and the staff for their research on the vision and mission statement since the inception of the city, and their research was so appreciated. I know that wasn't easy, so thank you, Mia and team. I wanted to bring to the city's attention that the lighting at Shorewood and North Atlantic intersections is extremely poor and causes a pedestrian safety issue at night. I have spoken to Dave, and I think Zach is the one that may have the action on that, but I wanted to bring the safety concerns there because it's extremely dark at that intersection. Additional lighting would be greatly appreciated. Also, two-way pedestrian crosswalk signage at North Atlantic, the northern side crosswalk would be appreciated as well. There is a sign on one side and the other side, depending on what direction you're going in, but I noticed on the Washington intersection, there is a, there are two signs, you know, for the two-way street, and I would recommend that we have two signs on the northern crosswalk as well. I did want to bring to the council's attention the faded bus shelters. As you may or may not know, when we first brought bus shelters to the city, we had them as dark green, consistent with our Tree City heritage. They were extremely gorgeous. They were made of wonderful materials to keep them from fading. Somehow, through the years, there was some change to make, three of them, one yellow, blue, and orange, and you may see that they're very faded. So I would recommend that the city consider restoring us to the original tree green so that it's harmonious with the rest of the city lighting as well as signage, as well as the bus shelters. I'd like to recommend that we consider, talking about advisory committees, establishing a resident advisory committee, looking at what the city's doing from a residence perspective. I did attend the business and development committee meeting earlier last week and got a good sense from them what they're considering, and I think that it would be hooveus to have a residence advisory committee to look at the city from the residence perspective. I think that may be a gap there for hearing what the residents looking for. And then lastly, I'd like to ask the city's consideration of accessible buildings and parking and to ask, do we have an ADA point of contact for city staff?
Got it.
Is there an answer to that? I'm just wondering if Todd may be able to answer that question.
Mike German, our building official.
Thank you. So that's where we would bring our concerns to his attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, and I appreciate you taking the time to write those out, which will be helpful to capture those. I think we'll be naturally getting into some of those with the agenda items as well. So the next card I have is Ms. Angela Mary Raymond.
Good evening. I've come here this evening to clarify that I never withdrew my application to serve on the Culture and Leisure Board, nor did I decline the position after going through the background check, the Culture Leisure Board's interview, and the interview by the council. I would like council to take action on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public comment cards that I have. I am now looking online to see if there are any hands raised. Do not see any, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand that did not get a chance to. Seeing none, and no hands raised online, go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting. And again, thank you all for your comments and time. All of those comments were heard, and I think we will get into some of those in this meeting. With that, the consent agenda is before us. Councilmember Jackson, I believe you need to pull item one, if I understand, so we can vote on those changes?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone like to pull anything else? If not, we're looking for entertain a motion to approve number two.
I'll make a motion, we approve agenda, consent agenda number two.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by councilmember Willis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. Now moving back to the pulled item number one, councilmember Jackson.
Yes, and this is where we have that handout provided?
Yes, and for those obviously listening in who may not know, this is to approve minutes for the March 19th, 2024 regular meeting. Councilmember Jackson. So we have that up, I think, in, in-
Yes, so just striking alleged and replace inserting potential, striking related to the former council member, inserting with the applicant's involvement.
Is there any significance to the highlighted?
That's just referencing the section so that we can find it.
Okay, so really, the strikes and underlines are the changes for this particular portion of the sentence?
Yes.
Got it. Removing, striking alleged, replacing with potential, so that would read concerns regarding potential conflicts of interest, removing related to the former council member and replacing it with conflicts of interest with the applicant's involvement in the past city council meetings. Okay, council, any discussion on this, or questions, or concerns? Councilmember Jackson, if it is your intent to do this, I think if you want to make a motion-
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Was this verbatim?
Yes, I went back to the recording.
Have we confirmed with the city clerk that it is verbatim?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to change as shown on the screen and in the handout, striking alleged, adding potential conflicts of interest, striking related to the former council member, adding with the applicant's involvement.
Okay. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion by councilmember Jackson, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum. Any further discussion on this? City clerk, does that motion-
Yeah.
-as written? Seeing none, city clerk?
Who was the second?
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
And, okay, got it.
I made the motion.
Got it. Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0 to amend the minutes as proposed. Thank you, now we are items for action. Item number three on the agenda, which is to receive the city engineer's presentation regarding Presidential Streets and Civic Hub projects, and provide direction to the city manager regarding the using of fiscal year 2324 CRA funds to obtain a task order for the design services for engineered plans for a civic hub underground stormwater exfiltration system. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. We talked about this project, these projects at our, our workshop, CIP workshop recently, and that there was going to be an update at this April council meeting from Kim Lee Horn. And I'm, thank you for Scott and your team for being here. When we, the city council approved the, the ideas of looking at the Presidential Streets several years ago as a long-term project, and, and also a few years back, city council identified the Civic Hub as more of a medium-range priority. So these are medium and long-range priorities for the city. Kim Lee Horn has been working on each of them, and each of them had a subordinate study. The Presidential Streets had a subordinate study, which was the one-way study, council authorized, should we look at one-way versus two-way streets. And the Civic Hub had a subordinate study, which is, we need to analyze, do an analysis about off-site stormwater coming to the Civic Hub. The Civic Hub has always, well, for quite some time now, been talked about as having a stormwater component underground, designed so we know where to build vertical improvements. So both of those tasks have been coming, kind of coming along, but then the subordinate task came in at the same time. And we thought, we really need to get a more global arms around both of these projects and those subordinate tasks to understand how they all kind of tie together, they fit together, and the recommendations work together, so that council can make informed decisions about how we want to move forward with these. The only thing I asked Scott and his team to do is, is present all this information, do some Q and A. But the action item that I'm asking at the end of this is, we have $150,000 in the CRA budget this year, and it was slated for selective demolition of certain things at the Civic Hub property. I think if council wishes, a better way to use that money would be to put it towards the stormwater engineering design for the Civic Hub, now that we have all this information. So although we don't have to answer that question tonight, perhaps we might be able to, just wanted to throw it out there, and, but we want to hear the presentation by Kim Lee Horn.
Thank you very much. Ready to go, Scott?
Thank you, welcome.
Well, I get set up here too, I'm, I have a cold, been doing a lot of traveling, and so I, I popped in a throat lozenge, and I had my water, so I apologize for, and I'm gonna speak, try to speak directly into the mic so I can stay low. And then Matt Wonsor of my office here has been involved, and so he, he may be backup, but city manager spoke so thoroughly through all of it. I'm sure staff can fill in if I have a coughing attack, but I apologize ahead of time. And city clerk, can I go ahead and take this?
Yep.
That was a powerful chord.
All of our screens went black.
Council members, do you see it on your screen now as well?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if I announced my name, Scott Mingana, Kim Lee Horn, 200 South Orange, Orlando.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll weigh in. We can certainly stop, have dialogue, answer questions, or ask questions as you need to, and I'll try to be brief. I have a hard time being brief, but maybe this cold will help me be more so brief. But I, I'm going to, as a part of this presentation, it is an update, and as city manager said, we're gonna, we're gonna look back on what we've done from the Presidential Streets, so that we can look forward to see what some of the recommendations are. The main reason we do that is there's been a little bit of time from all of us that we've looked through some of this process, and I, I think you'll see, and it will holistically show, how these master planning have had subordinate studies, some we've gone forward with, but some of them we've said, all right, that was our answer, and it's a no. Or some were, we think it's a good concept, and is it viable? And so we've done some subordinate things. So we're gonna look forward, we're gonna look around at the studies, and I think the city council staff holistically has done a phenomenal job of looking at all of this work, and this body of work, and how we've interlaced and connected them, because stormwater needs to be like that, infrastructure needs to be like that. We're not just looking at some spot improvement, even if it's a park, but how that ties to the whole. So mainly, I'm gonna look at the public realm project updates that Kim Lee Horn has been working on, and, and again, I'll zoom in and zoom out from some of the previous work, and then forecast head and look ahead for the final recommendations, and hopefully, we stay in, in, in sync throughout that. The main three projects, Presidential Streets, the Civic Hub, and then kind of the Fillmore Avenue feasibility, which is the linking the bigger stormwater project to a number of those things. We've already talked about the agenda, I'll kind of skip over that, but certainly, staff, city manager can talk about timing and funding and methodology as each of those recommendations come online. When you see anything on this master plan, on this presentation that says master plan in the upper right-hand corner, that's the actual slide we, I've pulled forward again, just as a refresher, but to show you the consistency that we presented probably back in December of 2022 on recommendations, and how those recommendations are now being placed and/or dovetailing in with what we're presenting here today. The, the framework of the Presidential Streets was this laundry list of holistic items, bike and pet improvements, roadway improvements, overall infrastructure. How can there be even traffic calming tools that include intersections and crossing and raised intersections, potential speed tables and other traffic calming, but also created a place for city, for the Civic Hub and for the city throughout all of these streets? How do we link and connect beach ends? And then how do we think, overall, with the stormwater improvements? And as, just as you've been awarded a lead city, how do you think about resiliency? Not only flooding, but storm surge and overall stormwater, and how that impacts the overall development? Again, a slide right out of the previous Presidential Streets emphasized that number one, that blue bar you see over 150 responses, talked about address flooding. So everything we do needs to be rooted in that solution, whether it's the Civic Hub or street redevelopment. And then again, it was documented where recent flooding, how that was, and what the major impact was, and how those stormwater improvements can be multifaceted. It's not one silver bullet that you do just one project. You link them through multiple phases or, or aspects, that would include exfiltration, would reduce impervious areas as much as possible. We reduce street widths where practical, reduce impervious areas, and consider other techniques, like yours bioswelle that is almost complete out here. So that's one component that we've been evaluating, and this study was prior to the final design of that. So these are, again, are linked in, and how these projects become holistic. We've highlighted too, the Meaden Hunt Study, that was another overall center-street basin study that highlighted where those basin flooding areas occurred. And you can see it consistently around the Fillmore, kind of center of that basin area. I don't think I can, oh yes, I can, highlight some of those areas. And right through here is that Fillmore area that will consistently show up and be consistent in our recommendations as we move forward. And again, one of the last elements of the Presidential Streets was a recommendation on resiliency improvements that not only included plants and Florida flintley trees, but LID practices, and it was a holistically, I'll use that term probably way too much tonight, but thinking about all of the things that build to a resilient model. And, and you've been awarded that even lead certification, so that's a recognition of how well you're doing. The final recommendation and focus areas talked about intersections and streets, and I highlight Fillmore as, this is directly out of the master plan, and I think we kept coming back to, all right, well, as we think of a demonstration project of which Presidential Street to do first, Fillmore kept coming back as a, as a critical area. When we were doing Civic Hub study, we'll talk about how the Fillmore could be a, a driving solution for us to tie that basin area to capture stormwater underneath the Civic Hub project. And overall, the strategy was, we needed to be thinking about a sequencing of street projects. If we think about all of the Presidential Streets, how do we do them? Is it one a year? Is it one, and then which one comes first? So even at the Presidential Streets master plan, we were thinking about, all right, well, how do we construct these? And which one is the best one to do, and which one should be done first? So that was always on the mind of the master plan, and it was even, came more clear as we started to zoom in to where the most critical mass, so to speak, or critical public realm improvements. And you can see that enlarged area where you have your government compliance, you have your rec center, which is the Civic Hub, you've got the Veterans Park that is almost complete, the bioswelle that is complete. You've been working on C5, but it's still part of this overall thought process. And so your hub of activity really was around Point Setta, Fillmore, and this public realm improvements. We always knew that the existing conditions were poor, especially on Fillmore. Those recommendations even included, when we were evaluating one-way or two-way, how do we make really improvements to this street that can include a shared-use path on one side or both sides, increased pedestrian activity? And what do we do at the crossings, especially at Ridgewood or Orange? Can we make that public space more safe for pedestrians in that area? And create a, a traffic calming, so if we raise it up, we're making those pedestrians feel like they dominate that intersection instead of the cars. So again, that was part of the master plan, and we've continued to, to progress that. And the final approach was a generational approach and a phasing strategy. I've highlighted number three, which is Fillmore Avenue. So again, that was the presentation of, back in, in December of '22, and that has influenced our thought process as we've been trying to answer the question of which street is first, and how do we start to organize it? And that is really the, one of, some of the final recommendations of the overall master plan. So the, the Presidential Streets master plan is complete, made some of those recommendations. The subordinate component of that was evaluating one-way versus two-way. And after that evaluation, for other concerns, for traffic, for safety, for access, for potentially longer response time by fire, we have not recommended a final one-way strategy, but continue forward with a two-way strategy as you currently have it outlined. So the study proved sufficient as a subordinate study, but we just felt like there was enough in that, whether it resident concerns and fire and response time, to continue forward with a two-way recommendation. I'll pause for Presidential Streets. The only thing we have left on that task order is a budgeted portion of that contract to evaluate grants. So that, we did a snapshot of what potential grants could be done to help with the city, and we've got about $12,000, $13,000 left of budget in that to say, okay, well, now that we've got this body of information behind us, how do we target a grant specifically that may go hand in hand with some other improvements? So which one is that? So that's the only thing left of the Presidential Streets in the one-way that is unfinished.
Council, any questions on the Presidential Streets? I think, Scott, that was, you wanted to pause here?
I did, I wanted to pause there because that was a lot, and I was, there was more history in that. But I was trying to forecast, and, and you'll see, hopefully, of why the Civic Hub, why the subordinate task determine, can we hydraulically connect? There's some feasibility analysis that we were doing as part of Civic Hub, and then at the very end, we're gonna recommend which street. And so I think all of that will point back to this as well, so I wanted to reinforce that.
And it sounds like you'll go through these, and we can even circle back at the end. Any questions? Any questions at this time?
I have one question. And I know you're already saying we need to stay with the two-way predominantly. But would there have been any kind of economic impact on property values had we gone with an alternating one-way?
Negative or positive?
Yeah.
Well, as you know, those streets have a ton of driveways and access and some other things. So it certainly would have been more complicated. The likelihood of it being negative probably outweighs the positive.
Okay.
The other big recommendation was you only have about 24 feet of asphalt pavement curb to curb. We needed 20 feet at least for fire safety for access. So you're really, you know, you're reducing it by four feet. Is that substantially viable or an action that with, you know, increased response time and some of the other things, is that a big enough trade-off for a positive recommendation?
Let me, let me ask another follow-up question. On the streets, again, we have 24 feet. And if you're going to shrink it down to 20, you better hope nobody is parking in the street. But would we, would we gain any significance by resurfacing with something other than asphalt? I mean, a pervious, a pervious or some other type of surface?
Yes, sir. And we'll evaluate that. And we have some options included in the final Fillmore Avenue feasibility recommendation. We have some plan recommendations, some cross-section analysis that will require further engineering analysis. But we think it's a holistic approach there. I said it again, you gotta give me a different word besides that. But it's, it's a comprehensive approach and not a silver bullet to stormwater. So there's potential pervious pavers, some other activities. But probably not within the entire street because of some stormwater things and high water table. It would make sense and for long-term viability of that material.
Okay. The reason, the reason I asked the question, there's also been some study about, I can't remember exactly the source at the moment, but traffic calming by using like a cobblestone type surface.
Sure.
And it slows down traffic, both vehicular and bicycle. So I'm.
No, we totally would include that in our toolkit. We would include that, especially at intersections, maybe at some parking areas. I don't think we need to evaluate that for the entire street. We could because it becomes costly. But are you getting enough bang for your buck? And as a traffic calming device, can you do it at the intersection between areas? Not too long, so people aren't speeding to get to one stop sign to another, right? But through those intersections, through some chicanes, through some parking areas, can you use those pavers or other things that act as a rumble strip? And give you a little bit of, of, you know, motion movement, I'm going too fast? And then we've also made some recommendations that will look at a shared use path on one side or both sides in the final street so that you can maybe even separate some or give people better mobility options.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything at this time? Great questions, thank you. Look forward to hearing the recommendations. Think we're ready to go to the Civic Hub.
I'll fast forward again and try to give you a holistic approach. The Civic Hub master plan, our final recommendation is in your packet. This is identical to what we presented the last time as the final option. We had a lot of dialogue and conversation around this project. And it mainly was, and it was mainly around the options of, you know, pickleball and tennis and how many. So we'll kind of go back to that, not to revisit that, but we think that this is a good compromise that stays in line with our overall master plan. And this is what we presented. So there's really no change, but I'll give you a quick highlight in case we all needed a little bit of a refresher or you have new council members here or new public. We started with the idea of having a consistent frontage along A1A, a good face, so that you've got this consistency of plaza between City Hall, working our way south along that. We would terminate Taylor at, at, at A1A and only have pedestrian access. We have an existing sign at City Hall here. We would partner that sign, this variable message kind of tenant sign at the corner here to the south of the property. Is that showing up on your screen as well? Is that arrow showing up?
Yes, we see you moving the mouse. You would do what to the sign? You said park.
We would do a sister sign, another sign at that corner location. So that we would have an anchoring, it would kind of be a branding of the City Hall complex. You would have one sign here and your existing sign here with City Hall. And it would kind of give you that frontage along each of those areas. And with some options that we've talked to staff about, maybe it being have a variable message or have multiple elements so that you can also, you can also highlight, you know, the Nancy Hansen, the tennis court, the other activities that are kind of within that Civic Hub area. And then again, that frontage area, we would close to pedestrian traffic Taylor Avenue. We would have, you'll see some, some enhanced stormwater and paving areas. We'd also connect to the existing Cape Center and to the, the parking areas. Kind of a food truck vendor area that would be located in that existing parking area that is there today. We'd preserve the wall of the astronaut, the kind of the mural wall, but we would remove everything behind that, everything to the south of that, which is the racquetball courts and the shuffleboard courts. And within that area, we would create a great civic space, an open lawn with an amphitheater. That amphitheater would be facing away and towards the Civic Hub, towards Nancy Hansen, to make sure that we were being respectable of the southerly adjacency residential. We'd have access along the street of Fillmore for some on-street parking or some vendors or some folks that needed access to loading bands. And we want to make sure city manager isn't hauling his guitar too far from the, from the street over here to get to the stage. So more, it's more the amp than the guitar, isn't it? And I'm sure, yeah. And then again, in this area, what we are showing is two tennis courts would remain. And we have six pickleball area in replacing two of those tennis. But most of this area is where we believe that the, the pickleball and tennis area will remain. And this is kind of the final organizational recommendation in that area. The dog park would remain in place with some enhancements and enlargements. We'd have a kind of a gathering space underneath the large live oaks. And then we would enhance access in the parking area that the sheriff's office is currently using. We've also added, even though we have a pedestrian area for Taylor Avenue, we have a turnaround here so that we could still access it when we've closed that street off for vendors, for food trucks and some, maybe some parking when you don't have events. But for the most part, you'd be able to close that street off and have this as a, as a great pedestrian street for tents, for festivals and those kinds of activities. With some final enhancements along the southern side for parking on Fillmore and the eastern edge along Point Setta for parking enhancements, very similar to what it is today. As a part of this study, we were always talking about, again, this, this comprehensive approach to how do we create more stormwater areas and act as a regional BMP, a regional stormwater facility, just as you've done on C5 at the city park with underground stormwater. So we highlighted throughout these activities and said, well, where can we do that? And how can we be most effective and efficient? Pardon me. And I'll get back to that. I just want to make sure that this is in your packet. And this is just kind of some of the final renderings to give you that flavor of what those final renderings would look like. In your foreground is that kind of Civic Hub market where you've got vendors and, and street activities along Taylor. You've got the mural wall that has been preserved. And behind that is kind of the flex lawn with the pavilion. And then the pickleball and tennis courts off in the distance. But that gives you a flair of the potential activities and overall development at its ultimate build-out, however you may phase that for improvements. And so I'll just flip through a couple of these. You have those in your packet or if there's other further conversations. And again, these have not changed from our previous recommendations before. How it might be viewed as nighttime, how you capture lighting in that mural wall and enhance your visibility to A1A. How it can become still a safe and inviting environment by lighting, by making sure we think about activities that there's no places for people to hide. And we have lighting and good eyes in public activities and it's a safe environment. We also have considered gateways at either end of Taylor. This would be on the Point Setta side to kind of create that environment that is a hub, a place to belong, a place of gathering with some kind of iconic portal on either side. And this is not final designs, these are just concept renderings to highlight those activities and how that active main street or the conversion of Taylor to a pedestrian street would look and feel. And then on the backside of that mural wall where the tennis, where the racquetball courts were, you know, that public space that could have food, beverage, community art, a chalk wall for activities with kids and restrooms and storage on either side to anchor that flex lawn and the pavilion. And you can see that zone off to the right with the pavilion there to the left, which points towards the intersection of Fillmore and A1A. And then again, the highlights of the pickleball and tennis that are currently in that same configuration with the Nancy Hansen building remaining in place with some improvements and upgrades over time. And then some just fun, active swings in other places where parents can watch their kids on playgrounds or be a part of the flex lawn and music, but still be off to the edge and still enjoying a soft conversation. And then some of those areas underneath the existing tree canopy that can be just very vibrant for eating and some other activities. This is the detailed approach. Now we're going to get into a lot of the engineering analysis that at the end of our recommendations for the Civic Hub, we evaluated all of opportunities to create a regional stormwater facility. And we said, if we aggregate all of these pink and red and blue and purple areas, we basically have somewhere between 100,000 of underground storage area. Now, some of the purple area includes the sections of Fillmore and Point Setta to our east. But that is to evaluate, one, we want to make sure that we have enough stormwater for our Civic Hub improvements within the site. And that's about 20,000 cubic feet of area is where we would target those areas. And it would probably be either in the, the red zones or this purple area here between the street and Fillmore. And I'll tell you, that's the final, our preference, especially if you agree with us when we get to the very end about which Presidential Street should be first. We're thinking that it's Fillmore and its connector of Point Setta for multiple different reasons. And we'll get to that point as well, but that's why we think that area. Good, good point to pause and ask for questions.
Thank you. Is this in our packet, this particular slide?
I believe it is. I can send this final presentation to City Clerk and she can. This is basically the same slide and presentation that we showed. As you can see, it says stormwater A or option A. That is the same thing that we presented at the, when we presented the final Civic Hub presentation, whenever that was. Last year, I believe it was what, November? Last year? Maybe further.
So the site summary table and on the screen in front of us is divided into three columns, east and west. And it totals east and west. And there is a designation called pervious pavers. That's not exfiltration, that's just.
Correct, correct. That's the way the pervious pavers can interact and get that surface stormwater to those basins below.
We don't calculate the pervious pavers.
No, we are talking about treatment volume. So we're talking about how can we store additional volume for treatment, for being held within a subsurface area that will do two different, it'll, it'll, we'll deal with it in two ways. It'll be exfiltration, it'll have a rock bottom. So as long as there's separation between the groundwater and the bottom of that basin, the water will infiltrate into the ground over time, right? That's the easiest way and cheapest way to deal with it. Just let it get back into the ground. The other way, as it rises, we develop a part of the entire basin so that it's hydraulically connected, meaning once this fills up, it pops off and then goes downstream. But the more we can reduce water going downstream, the less you'll have to upsize your stormwater further downstream. And that will be extremely key when we talk about the next couple of things. Because you have really big infrastructure improvements as recommended in the Meeden Hunt study. And especially the 54-inch pipe that crosses under A1A. If we can reduce, siphon off, if we can capture enough of that stormwater upstream and remove it out of that system, our, our hooray moment will be that you don't have to do anything with that 54-inch underneath A1A. And that will save you not only time, but a ton of, of money and energy trying to do a project with DOT. I like the DOT, but I'm just saying, you don't want to spend the money. So, and I'll get to those points here as part of the presentation on the feasibility.
The four, under the legend, there's four colored areas. The site summary totals of the west and east basins only, not the additional area for underground exfiltration?
I'd have to verify actual, I think the total available treatment volume, 98% sure. Yeah, we can give you a solid answer, but I'm pretty sure it's all treatment areas. But it does not total up the pervious paver area. It's just the treatment volume because that's where the exfiltration, wherever you see exfiltration. So that's the red, the pink and the purple.
Okay, so there's three exfiltrations, west, east and additional. But we don't see a column for additional in the site summary breakdown. So it's unknown if I understand you, whether the additional area is included in those calculations or if this total is just east plus west.
I believe the 62,000.
Yes.
Is a, is a. I'll get back, I mean, we can confirm.
Well, if it is true that west is 40,000 and if it's true that east is 22,000, when we add those together, that does total out pretty close.
What I'm questioning our own graphic on is, is there a interim optionality that we were evaluating that was part of east and west? And we just reduced it to 62,000? Because at one time, and I've got a slide on the next one that is part of our overall presentation, at one time, we had it upwards of 100,000. So, so I'm, I'm questioning whether that purple would be some additional amounts that would take it to about that same level. So maybe that graphic didn't get updated for this presentation and those columns are there. The, the big takeaway is that we only need 20,000 cubic feet of storage for our project, the Civic Hub. And we probably have an additional 60,000 to 80,000, based on the math and based on the correction of that math, to use for other areas. And that's where we left the Civic Hub. And we said, we think we can hydraulically connect. We can take flooding areas that are. connect, we can take flooding areas that occur on Fillmore and Orange, Fillmore and Point Setta, other areas, and connect it, convey that water down to the, where the storage is at the Civic Hub. We thought it was a concept, but the subordinate task and feasibility analysis was our take-home homework to come back and say, will it work? What we found out was, we can make it work, but we need to adjust the inlets at those areas. To adjust those inlets required some more reconstruction. I'm probably getting way ahead of myself on the presentation too, but I'll go ahead and kind of talk about through this as well. So, you have vitrified clay in your sanitary sewer lines, you have sanitary sewer that runs down Taylor. If you open that street, it's going to make sense to replace that or figure out a way to get your sanitary from Nancy Hansen to other locations. And if you do a new restroom inside the Civic Hub, you're going to still have to connect somewhere. So, it would make sense to do that. The same for Fillmore. If we're going to modify those structures in Fillmore at the intersections of Point Setta, Orange, and Ridgewood, so that we can connect them to the volume where the volume is, and remove that much stormwater out of the Center Street basin, which is causing downstream issues as well, because it makes you have to do a bigger pipe downstream. So, if we can siphon off a little bit of that, then that would benefit us in the long term, in long range. So, when we look at, and that's, the entire punchline here is, we're leading up to why we are suggesting Fillmore as your first demonstration project for the residential streets, because of the feasibility analysis we did, and it, and it pointed to that, and I think I can kind of go right into what that is. Here's that summary of why. It included 100,000 cubic feet, and that includes the adjacent roads. So, that is the purple area. So, that's where, you can see that, that preliminary analysis, the 100,000, so that, Mayor, you're identifying the 61, 62 number, 62,000 on the graphic. Overall, including the adjacent roads, we've got about 100,000 around the Civic Hub. So, that purple area may be that additional 40,000 that I didn't think that graphic maybe got updated, but we can certainly verify that. And again, we only need 20,000 cubic feet for the Civic Hub's own stormwater. So, it is a holistic approach. It is the creation of a place to belong, a wonderful place that could be phased in over time. It is the foundation of the stormwater at the center of our basin, and we can hydraulically connect flooding areas to the Civic Hub. It will require to replace that vitrified clay, but it is probably what we call influent infiltration and I&amp;I. So, you probably have cracks in that clay pipe. You either get groundwater or you get stormwater that gets sent directly to your treatment facilities, and so you're paying to process clean water, groundwater, or stormwater. So, that is a treatment cost that is probably an unforeseen condition of what happens in these older municipal infrastructure. And so, you should see, you know, treatment costs go down as you start to repair this infrastructure over time. So, that led us to that question of, well, which presidential street is the first demonstration project as we are evaluating the feasibility of Fillmore? So, we, again, we stepped back and said, okay, well, let's look at the overall vision plan. We're, we're tasked with looking at the feasibility of why Fillmore, or is it Fillmore, or can we connect Fillmore hydraulically? And as we were doing that, we felt like we needed to step back and look whole, all right, somebody's got to give me a different word, but comprehensively, Google it while we're, you know, waiting here, but we look at all of the streets in this area. I'll dumb it down a little bit. To see what the Meaden-Hunt study, where were the streets that had flooding issues? What were their studies recommending? And as they recommend these Tier One or Project One, Project Two, Project Three, the first three projects that they were recommending were street improvements and storm line upsizing, you can see by the different colors, this is a direct snip out of the Meaden-Hunt study. What the city has proceeded forward with is the pump station that includes a tidal valve so that you don't have stormwater surcharging and backing into your system so that during high incident events, during high stormwater events, you're not surcharging that already full lines and therefore having worse flooding in this Center Street basin. So, as we looked at that study, as we continued to do our analysis, it led us to review this entire sub-basin, and we pulled some of their engineering, we even got their electronic models of the basin, and we feel like as you analyze what that pump station, once it gets online, let's do a little bit of analysis to see how well it is helping your overall system, and wait on some of these bigger improvements to the south. Typically, that would not be a normal procedure that we'd evaluate. You typically want to go from the bottom of the basin, the downfall of the basin, and work your way, so you don't work into infrastructure that you leave out. You don't want to make an improvement when then suddenly you've got to replace the infrastructure. That makes no sense, and you're spending, you know, good money, or wasting good money that you've already spent. So, you don't want to do a road, you don't want to do a sidewalk improvement, you don't want to do street improvement when you have poor infrastructure or infrastructure that may need to get upsized. But we feel like Fillmore is at the top or the middle of this, this basin area where they were making recommendations, and therefore, can we take some of that stormwater and increase our capacity to, to not send it downstream, to do exfiltration, and tie it to the Civic Hub? And again, I saw the golden ticket, the big hooray moment, is if we can kick that 57-inch underneath A1A, or, or not ever have to do that improvement. And we'll be able to tell after the stormwater pump is in, after maybe that first demonstration project is done. And if you do, well, I mean, okay. And then we can start to work through the next two or three demonstration projects or next streets that you do. So, that kind of led us to why Fillmore Avenue. It kind of answers the bell on a lot of the different things that we've been talking back all the way through the master plan. It answers the stormwater improvements, it's both exfiltration, it's using rain gardens, it's using low-impact elements to increase your opportunities. You saw how you were able to get a grant for even the stormwater, the bioswell project at the Veterans Park. That's becomes a really huge aesthetic element, as well as playing a key cog in your stormwater enhancements. You'll be able to replace that vitrified clay. Not only is it brittle, but it, whenever you open the street and you start to do stormwater improvements around it, we've seen that it, it just collapses, and it's very hard to do, so it requires that, that improvement at that time, and you're about right for another, you know, 25 to 50-year infrastructure improvement that you should be good for. And it provides a shared use path for interconnectivity. So, this is our recommendation. We would say the feasibility analysis that was a subordinate task to Civic Hub led us to, or staff even asking us, well, what do you think as a part of those presidential streets? We, we believe Fillmore is the answer to that question, and here's what Fillmore would look like. If you look at the Civic Hub on the left, starting at A1A, this is Fillmore, the shape, the crosshatched areas are where we would have underground exfiltration. The blue areas are where we would have rain gardens or a tree well. The green areas are sod or landscape zones. The shared use path, you can see it's somewhat highlighted and labeled there, but it has a slight buff-colored tint to it, where that could be an eight-to-10-foot shared use path that ran along Fillmore, and as it got to Orange or to Ridgewood, we could use an intersection improvement, a, a table intersection, and potentially cross over that entire street at an angle, and, and go all the way to the beach end as well. And here's what that typical cross-section would look like. The typical cross-section is just that, it's a cross-section basically at the point between Point Setta and Orange, somewhere along that line, and you're basically looking east, standing maybe at, at Fillmore and Point Setta, looking east. So, the area underground would be more exfiltration trench underneath there. We would tie hydraulically the new stormwater system to not only that exfiltration, but to the exfiltration that would be at the Civic Hub. We'd create a, a rain garden, very, but a very linear one that would look very similar to the bioswell that you currently have almost in completion there at Vets Park. And then we would also look at structural soil cells or another kind of treatment areas, or based on the total budget that we have, and maybe some pervious pavers that would increase the rooting volume so that this tree has area to grow and, and thrive to make sure it's not, you know, destroying our, our infrastructure with the roots, but we create zones for that to be, to be located. And then again, we're just showing where the, the electric lines, the potable lines, and, and where the reclaimed, the reconstructed sanitary sewer. On the left and right, we have examples of, of rain gardens of what we're proposing in these linear rain gardens, and on the right is a, is a, that's actually a stormtrap system. If you remember, last time we were here, we brought a sample little model of that that exploded up here, and we had to pick up the pieces there. That's the kind of system that we're proposing. The reason we're saying a concrete one and stormtrap is because we can put it very low to the surface of the road, up to eight to 12 inches, so you can drive on top of it. It's concrete, it also has an open bottom, so that if we have low enough groundwater, then we can still get exfiltration from that trench, and that entire vault can only be 18 to two feet. And so, it'll still give us enough capacity to use it, to put it underneath the road, tide it in, and again, overall, connect it to these areas. So, really for us, it's, we think it's been consistent that we've seen traces, we've seen these, these crumbs that have led back to the master plan that said, you ought to look at Fillmore. It's the central east-west street of the Center Street stormwater basin. We think that's going to give us some benefit by taking stormwater and not taking all that stormwater all the way down to Buchanan and then out Center Street. We can hydraulically connect it at the highest incidence of flooding, where some of the worst flooding is, especially at Orange and Fillmore. And it's central to the city's redevelopment activities. We've seen it's tied to the Civic Hub and what you're doing at Vets Park, the City Hall complex, and that'll be a good demonstration project that is partnership with all of the other improvements. You get added benefit of a shared use path for interconnectivity. And it's just consistent, as we've loaded in the master plan, it was a Tier One improvement and recommendation by the Meaden-Hunt study as well, and it could potentially reduce that overall stormwater, stormwater basin improvements downstream. And I said, the biggest note, or the biggest hooray, the biggest win out of this is if we don't have to do some of those recommendations where you've got big pipe and total reconstruction of the roads downstream. So, there, I made it all the way, I think.
Thank you, Council.
No questions, I was just...
You sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so three, really two major projects we've been talking about, and the, the Fillmore addition. First, I want to thank you and Kim Lee Horn and city staff for putting together this analysis. I've went through it. I'd like to, to go through it again, and as you said, it is resurfacing some of those older documents in the vision plan or the presidential streets and the surveys, and I have appreciated this approach. So, Council, if we have any questions, and/or city manager, if you want to, bring it back to you, how about that?
Sure. I, I'm so grateful for this presentation tonight, because for staff, this has been like four separate projects we've been working on and getting results back at different times. And when we all got together in the conference room one day, we were, we were on a Zoom call with you, Scott, and your team, we said, hey, this just makes sense to present it all at one time and see, and I, I think you've done a really good job of showing how everything can work together for, I know it's not the word you want to use, let's use cohesive system. Yeah.
I was looking for that word earlier.
But no, I think this is a good way for Council to take in this information, the higher view, higher-level view of it conceptually, that now as we go forward in, in budget-making, we're thinking about how, what do we want to program in each budget year and how we want to prioritize our, our funding. It's good to have this in, in your mind, in the back of your mind about how this all works. We don't have to make any decisions on that tonight, of course, but having this as background at the beginning of our budget season, I think is very, very helpful. So, that, that's why it was done that way and pulled together this nicely, thank you.
Agreed. And Ezra, a few of those slides, there was some other ones I saw. The packet, maybe they're buried in here. I think getting some of the, the numbers together or from those slides is really helpful. And so, you got all the way through here to the recommendations that we can, as our city manager said, consider as we are making financial decisions, and I really like that. I do have a few just technical questions. The clay pipes, it says useful life, what are, what is the remaining estimated useful life of those older, those older pipes?
We haven't done any studies. You, the city could probably do some TVing or some smoke testing and seeing how bad it is. Maybe it's not bad. Maybe you haven't done redevelopment, maybe there's not a building that's been, you know, done, and there, there's vibration and other things that have not impacted those plays. So, it's hard to tell. They're, they're typically, you know, 30 to 40-year improvements at best, but you've got older than that probably clay.
Did you find what year they were installed in your analysis?
I think they're identified, I wanted to say in the 60s, but I don't remember.
I know that they were slip-lined in the two, early 2000s, because we didn't want to replace them then.
So, so again, that's a one step, that's a, that's an improvement project based on probably some TVing or some smoke testing or some other things that were done. So, even at 2000, they're still now 24 years.
Yeah. And those are wastewater or sewer pipe? You talked about the water flowing into the pipes, which puts a burden on the treatment process, and thank you for explaining that. Is there, isn't there a risk of it going the other way, where the wastewater comes out of the pipes if the pipes have cracks? Does it, certainly in water and rain?
Most of your sanitary in that area is a gravity-fed system.
Okay.
So, you know, some of that inflow comes in from gravity areas. So, that's where the cracks, yes, there could be some effluent escaping off other cracks, but there's also cracks at areas where you've got lines coming in from buildings, and therefore groundwater or stormwater gets into those cracks and then feeds and surcharges your system as well. So, it's hard to tell without looking at everything. If it's already been inlined, then maybe it's not as bad, but I, I don't really know. We just know that it would need to, it would need to be evaluated, and if you're looking at doing major redevelopment, even though it's been 24 years since it's been slip-lined, trying to work in and around those could be evaluated, but I would suggest that we video it, we smoke check, and make sure that we aren't doing that investment while you had the street open.
Did we complete the wastewater videoing, the state statute required, or was it stormwater? I know, I think we have to do both.
Tim, what was the portion that was stormwater was done, right? The inlets and inverts elevations? Can you come, can you come up, can you come up, Tim? Thank you.
So, we have the video, as he's coming up, of the stormwater completed?
I'll let him answer, may I?
Thank you.
Has it on? Okay. We got the stormwater section done, but the, what you're talking about, what you're speaking about is the wastewater section. The first phase of that project was getting the whole system GISed. And then the second phase, which they haven't passed, that hasn't gone through, I don't think it's been voted on yet through the House or the Senate.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, there's, there, it's a bigger project of where they're, they might end up making cities... smoke line or smoke test the whole entire system throughout the city, each city. So there is a bigger sanction or a bigger section of those projects. Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, being that that's a bill or that has not been mandated yet, however, the GIS Phase One portion.
Identifying, tagging it, geotagging, yes.
That section jumped out at me. I appreciated addressing it in the report and... Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
I have a question. Can we go back to the slide that shows the road and the shared pathway and?
The sectional view, I think she made.
Yeah, this. I just want to understand, you said that the roads are 24 feet wide and we need 20 for fire and safety and all that. On the, most of the streets in the presidential streets, there's lots of driveways, parking lots, and will we be taking people's properties to?
No, no. What we've shown, again, we've reviewed this without survey. We're looking at GIS, we're taking clues from looking at the street, where the right-of-way is, where the right-of-way would be, at the back of sidewalk, at power lines, at what's typical for prescribed right-of-way in those areas. So we think we're close, but we're not survey data close, right? We think we know about where it is. And if you look at this plan view, if I could even zoom in maybe to one session, and this is where Matt did a lot of this analysis just so that we could evaluate, where is the best place to put a shared use path? Well, we have consistent driveways on one side, and we have an entire parking lot that accesses the right-of-way for parking on the other side, right? So let's not do the shared path on that side. Let's do the shared path on the Civic Hub side. We can connect to that side. We only have driveways between Point Setta and Orange. And then, as you can see, when we went down, if I can scroll down off my picture instead of the screen like I'm supposed to, maybe that shared use path goes to the other side because the north side of Fillmore between Orange and Ridgewood is an entire parking area that backs out. And now how do you adjust? And are you on private property and are you? So what we've shown here is a way to snake through that cross-section, maybe it flips, through this entire street. And we think that we could do that because probably back in 2015, we looked at some other cross-sections for Polk at the time. We were trying to figure out what Polk was going to look like as we were coming online with the new City Hall complex and some other things. So again, we have some anecdotal information. We also did a study on pedestrian and bike mobility that we are looking at where we can do some connected areas. So this is informed by some other studies that we've done and some work that Matt and our team has done, just evaluating driving the street via, you know, Google Street View and seeing how we can stay within private property. I mean, off private property, sorry, off private. Let's be clear.
Okay.
It's the medicine talk.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
I'm new at this, Scott, so I'm trying to wrap my hand around all of it and grab into this. So I have a question for you, and I know you had said this earlier, so I wanted to get your information on it and see if you can give me technical information on it. This is in the Civic Hub and the Center Street Basin Stormwater Feasibility Analysis. And in that summary at the last of it, it says that the report assumes the existing conditions shown within the stormwater report for Center Street Basin are consistent with current conditions and doesn't take into consideration our new projects, which we, of course, have the tidal valve and the rain garden. So.
Mainly the tidal valve because that's really, the rain garden is upstream of that.
Okay, so how are we making, and this is just me wanting to know how you all determine this, how do you determine what we need if we don't know what the impact of the tidal valve yet? Because I'm really excited for this. I'm wanting it to be in like right before storm season so we can see it in action.
You know exactly what you're asking. That's the, that's the right spot-on question as well, and that's what we've been saying with staff. And that's why they, I think strategically said, let's do that one first, let's monitor it, and then we'll be able to see at the top of the basin, how much stormwater do we need to pull out of the system? Our thinking is, well, the more the better because it will decrease the improvements that we need to do like we're showing on this screen, which is at the bottom end of the basin, the downstream side of the basin down towards Buchanan and Center Street. So that's the exact question to be thinking about. We need to evaluate and see what it does. And we will run those models before we do the improvements.
Okay.
To be a part of the improvement. Say that the city manager says, you know, let's evaluate the stormwater at Civic Hub. Well, we would like to not only see how much is feasible, engineeringally feasible, but before we do the Fillmore, we'd like to have some analysis so that we can rerun those analysis.
Well, that's my thing that I'm having, trying to come to terms with is how would, how would an engineer know what's needed under the Civic Hub or down Fillmore without knowing the results of the tidal valve? And my other quote, and along with that, I've been down there when it floods. And so, and I know that Center Street is at the lowest point in the basin, but we're looking at up. I mean, is Fillmore a little bit, you know, higher than Center Street?
A little bit, central to the Center Street Basin, right? It's about midpoint, and a lot of that stormwater flows north to south. If we can intercept it at Fillmore and we can divert it and we can take it to a storage area that we don't send it downstream, that's a benefit to the rest of the system downstream.
Okay. And then our storm valve, our tidal valve, which remember, I'm trying to get my hands around everything, is that being installed at the, at the end of Central?
Center.
Center, excuse me, thank you. Center, okay. So it's actually on a different street. So this Fillmore would be gathering potential stormwater that would not be down Center Street.
All of your connections are north to south. You see, this is Fillmore. Can you see my cursor?
Yes.
So all of that stormwater that flows down Center Street, these areas, I don't, I don't have a basin analysis on this, but a lot of these rooftops, say waterfalls on these rooftops, it goes to the street, it flows down the street, goes in this inlet, it's tied to this stormwater and it flows downstream. Eventually, it all goes out that same direction.
Right.
So the more that we can take out of this system and send it downstream, the better off and the least, and a lesser degree of increased stormwater, as you see in these orange, red, and yellow lines that were part of the recommendation.
Okay. And I have reasons I'm asking this because I've been here during one storm that was, it was huge flood and flooded, you know, almost from 528 or 520 to right in front of Cannaveral Sands on Ridgewood. And there were sections of A1A that flooded. However, that's the only time I, as a resident, have seen it up on A1A flooded like that. Have there been other occurrences? Or was that a one-time thing? Does anyone know? I'm just curious about this because it's really rather hard to judge how much floodwater we're dealing with here, you know, and ensure that we're looking at maximizing the drainage.
I don't know where that exact location is that you gave me across the street, but I don't have any anecdotal information on.
It's almost up to Central, but not quite. But I, but it would, when it flooded, it flooded down towards the, you know, on Ridgewood, but there was also flooding on A1A. And I mean flooding, where a car was in a culvert and the taillights were pointing at.
Like a sinkhole.
Yeah, remember that? And so.
The Radisson property.
Exactly, right there by Zachary's.
Yes.
And so for me, I want to, you know, I want to make sure I understand where we're putting them and what estimations we had and what we're trying to anticipate. You know, as you mentioned in your materials, you're mentioning 100-year floods, you know, which flood type are we looking at? Because there are 100-year floods and 50-year floods and that sort of thing.
And we don't know when the next one's coming.
And we don't know when their next one's coming, and we can't determine storm surge, and we don't know what the tidal valve does yet. So I can't wait for the tidal valve because that, and I think even though, as you look at the smart rain garden, I think as a detention pond, runoff is a huge thing, but I haven't seen big flooding in that area. Now, it may be closer to the ocean that has done that because I've seen it down there, you know, literally. But I'm unsure of, you know, that and what kind of impact the tidal valve will have. And Dawn, you may know more.
No, Noah.
I mean, you've answered, you've asked the right questions, and one of the things that you asked early on, how do we know how much stormwater at the Civic Hub? Well, Civic Hub has an independent project, right? If you just look at how much existing today impervious area, how much proposed impervious area, and we'll run models based on what is required by the Water Management District. That's what Matt does all day long and leading. And so we know about what the requirements, and that's how we got to the 20,000 cubic feet of area that we would need to treat its own stormwater. And that's why we now have an additional. We can do generally that same thing within this basin. So as a part of maybe the first phase of that study, and we do this as a part of our resiliency planning studies, we can take LiDAR information, which is survey, but it's not exact. We can evaluate that LiDAR. We can project through the series of storms. We can either get that data from NOAA, we can get that data from other regional planning councils. We're working with the Regional Planning Council and other jurisdictions that were provided that, or we can run it ourselves and take those storms through there, through a program, whether it's ICPR, like we have your models, or we can do some other models. I'm doing the talking, I should let him talk, but he's here to basically say, what you meant to say, Scott, was this.
You're a technical person.
Yes. And so he will run those storms and to show, all right, if, if this is not backed up storm or if the stormwater pipes are not filled, how much capacity? So you could almost simulate what that tidal valve is doing based in your model.
If you want to come up, speak into the, we have folks listening and recording. Thank you very much.
So the tidal valve, oh, Matthew, Wonzar, Kim Lee Horn with Scott. I think you just wanted to stop talking for a little bit. So the tidal valve is going to keep water from backing up into the system, but it doesn't solve the capacity issue. So these pipes were put in a long time ago. There's been a lot of construction since then, extra impervious area producing more runoff going into these pipes. So our goal with capturing stormwater is we're going to take, we're going to add additional capacity to the pipes downstream by removing stormwater upstream, which then increases capacity for other areas to then flow into those pipes is kind of what we're talking about. So the previous study that was done was looking at it from a previous condition. We want to then rerun that model from the existing condition, and as we take pieces away and put them into these exfiltration systems, then see how that affects the pipes downstream and then potentially keep taking pieces away till we don't have to maybe make those larger improvements later on.
Okay, so in that case, you would be removing some of the clay pipe? Is that correct?
That would be for the sanitary.
Okay, the sanitary, okay. Because I know all of our infrastructure is pretty old here.
Right. If you're going to rip up the street, let's go ahead and, you know, let's not have to rip it up again in five, 10 years.
If you're making 25 and 50-year improvements to your streets, be holistic. You don't want to leave something that only has a five, 10-year life expectancy.
And, and that makes sense to me, it does, because we need to do, to make sure our infrastructure is newer, you know, you cannot ignore it.
And there's no cheaper time to do it than when you've got it all open.
Right. And that's the truth, so, okay. I'm just still confused how we'll know about that storage, but that's fine. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I think it's, it's, we are approaching the budget. We will make investments in whatever I think the priorities are, and we'll talk through that. When it comes to flooding, I think we have more information than we did to help make some decisions, but I'm with you on, you know, getting down to what staff and our engineers recommend with the modeling of different options and whether or not we should pursue that, that data. So thank you, and we can circle back. Are there any other questions, Councilmember Jackson?
I would just like a copy of the presentation since we're missing some of the appendices in here. That will help me. I mean, as I said, I'm getting the.
The feasibility analysis is a 10-page memo, plus or minus, and then overall, it's about 100 pages of additional documents. And I, I don't know if that was, is that what you're talking about? You're talking about the feasibility? Or you're talking about the presentation we did tonight?
Your presentation, I think.
Your presentation, would it?
We saw slides and data that we did not, I can't find in the packet, that I think we want to see, we think is valuable.
And then there's a lot of things in the appendix that it says what it is, but it's not there for us. So Appendix J gives maps and location, all this, there's nothing there. But we might have that in a prior report.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to speak on some of the things that you were speaking on, Councilmember Jackson. Up where you were talking about the flooding on A1A, that's in a different basin. So what, what Kim Lee Horn has done is only the Center Street Basin on top of Mead and Hunt Study for that Center Street Pump Station. So when it went, when it goes up north, that's a totally different basin. And a lot of that actually that flooded was FDOT-owned state road. So unfortunately, the state needs to fix the corridors on their side. But the Center Street Basin, you are correct, the tidal valve, what I'm hoping to achieve with this system is to be able to pump the system out before a storm, clean all the water out of the pipes, turn it off, which will then create more capacity in the pipes because as we know, if you have pipes here and your river's here, that means you're going to have water filling the pipes all the way. And I've seen it all the way up to the 300 block where it's sitting water. So if we can go ahead and pump that whole system out, that creates more volume for more rainwater to go in there. And then the pump will act as a backup saying, hey, all right, we're starting to fill up, let's flush it out, and it won't let it come back in. So we're pretty, we're excited for this whole pump station, I'll tell you that. And I think that when Kim Lee Horn did their study for now, since the elevations were difficult to work off of on the presidential streets, on getting it, of course, we all know water doesn't go uphill. And it's, like you had mentioned, it's in a pretty old system. So we would literally have to revamp the whole system to get it to go down towards the Civic Hub Center. But, but what we had looked at also was onsite storage, kind of like what we did here at City Hall. We have all these underground chambers at City Hall, and we were like, well, hey, guess what? If we can at least get all that water in the Civic Hub area in underground chambers onsite, that will be that much less water going through that whole system. And the same thing with the rain garden. I know we just have one curb cut, but that's less water going through that whole system, which could, you know, relieve the system. So I think during the Mead and Hunt Study, they had mentioned, try to find other areas that you could possibly look to relieve the whole system. That's where the rain. That's where the rain garden came in. And then we're looking for little niches here and crannies here and stuff.
And I appreciate your information on that because there are other areas of the city that have some standing water issues.
Yes, you're right.
And so we want to make sure, you know, I don't want to over-engineer one section of the city while ignoring another that's got an issue. So, and it's very hard to determine. So now that you said that, asking you fun questions. How do you monitor how well this is working while it's in action?
We don't flood. I said, we don't flood.
Tell me, tell me how much water's down there right now, how do you know that?
Ken, I just want to comment to that. In my head is we have the data from the three acute events over the past three to four years that triggered a lot of this. We have the photos, we have the rain gauge meter reports. We had some reports that were provided by city staff. The rain incident reports are city manager and team worked and provided. While I would not hope that that event happens again, there is a side of me hoping to see something close to it to see how it performs. But we have not had an event really comparable to that fortunately since then.
So truly.
That's for me in my head, and I think we've talked about that, city staff, but.
So truly, performance is determined based on a massive rain event?
If I may add to just hypothetically thinking to answer a little bit of that question, we know what size pipes are in the basin, all the way down. We know existing. If we theoretically remove all the water, we know how much volume can be held within the system. So we can model that and show you and run. A typical project would be a 10-year storm. Well, how much does that go into the system and will it be within the entire system? So we could model, and those are quick analysis. You could model 10, 20, or whatever, storm analysis to see where that entire volume. And then we could start adding in, you know, exfiltration in Fillmore, additional 60 to 80 feet in civic hub, and then add to that volume. And so that would be very easy analysis to identify.
And that's the type of thing I would love to see. Because as I'm saying, I want to make sure we're not over-engineering one spot where it'll never have a drop of rain on the street again while another area of the city may be suffering. So for me, I love modeling. I love things like that. I would love to see that with the various storms so that we can kind of understand the performance. Because truly, until you have the rain event, you don't have a way to monitor it.
Well, we can certainly evaluate that in the systems. There's also a level of improvement. The DOT has to do certain levels of.
Improvements for the 56-inch pipe, are you saying when they redeveloped that? Gave it a shot. I have no idea what he's gonna say.
Okay.
Trying to help.
Hard to see where we're going there. So the DOT has different, there's different levels of design. So essentially what Scott's been referring to is an HGL calc. That's your hydraulic gradient line. So when you design a parking lot, any storm system, that's basically saying, is water coming out of your inlet or not? The standard storm for that is a 10-year, 24-hour storm. We, you know, as an engineer, we can design for anything, but if you want us to design for a hundred-year storm, you know, it's gonna get crazy.
And I'm not really wanting to design for a hundred-year storm. But what I'm wanting to understand as someone that's looking at how we move this forward in an intelligent manner is how much engineering do we need to do for this? How much do we need to do versus doing a ton in this area if we have it covered? And we don't really know how much we have covered until we get that tidal valve installed and get it a rain event. So any kind of modeling to me would help. Doesn't necessarily have to be a thousand-year storm, the apocalypse, or whatever. We just need to kind of, I need to kind of have an idea of making sure we're not over-engineering.
The DOT will require certain modeling to be done because they have lower thresholds of flooding, right? They can't have inlets where they get backed up and cars and safety and, you know, there's certain other factors. These are local streets. We have a little bit more flexibility. We do have permitting requirements that we have to adhere to. But we gotta be careful about no flood, the term no flooding. Or I saw that pond there, or that puddle there, or that, you know, slight area around, but it was only there for 30 minutes or an hour or whatever. But it's not backing up and making sure that it's not backing into someone's residence and causing private property damage. So there's gonna be some levels of those and we can run some analysis in the overall basin at the storm events that Matt was talking about. We don't need to say we're gonna, you know, not have any flooding or not have any ponding. We gotta be careful about those terminology because if we, we could do it, but you wouldn't want to pay the infrastructure cost to upsize all of that to make sure you didn't do anything.
Absolutely. It would help me with looking forward at the civic code project. It would help me with that.
Acceptable levels.
Right, acceptable levels. We want to keep the water out of people's house. But if we get to a point where that's accomplished, then there are other areas of the city we need to look at that for those other areas as well. So that's what my point more or less is.
Just, oh, I'm sorry. Just about Kimmy Horn up, I think, and they have been discussing that with us on waiting to see what the pump can do before they go too far in. So that's kind of like what you're saying right now and that's exactly what we're doing.
Let me know when it goes in. I'm gonna be over there in my yellow slicker and my raincoat.
All right, will do.
I'm so excited about that tidal valve. Okay, thank you all.
And Tim, was there anything else? I know that kind of went around. You were making the points earlier about, and then she asked how we're gonna monitor and I jumped in there.
No, that's, yeah, we have multiple rain gauges throughout the whole city. You know, as you know, sometimes in Florida, it can rain in your front yard and not in your backyard. So we put up multiple rain gauges, but that's how we kind of monitor, you know, the rain and how much we're getting. I think that's what you were saying, right?
Yes, one way, maybe a poor man's way compared to what we're doing with the modeling. Counts, keep going, Mayor Per Tim.
I have one question.
Oh, yes.
Probably for Tim. When we built City Hall, we built underground storage for water. And they were saying that for the civic hub, we need 20.
20,000 cubic feet of storage.
So is there extra storage room? Is City Hall in the center basin? I mean, is there extra?
Yeah, they're, this is part of the Center Street basin, correct?
Okay, that was my question.
And I don't think the city, we could look back and pull the records, but I don't think the City Hall built additional capacity above and beyond.
No, it was just built to meet code.
Meet code, yeah.
Councilmember Willis or Councilmember Davis? No more comments? Thank you all very much for your time and working through this presentation. Like three different things into one. And with hurricane season approaching, it's relevant. And I think we will keep this top of mind as we head into the budget. City manager?
I just wanted to add second thoughts on the request for the $150,000 in the CRA budget. This body cannot opine on that tonight because it is a CRA expenditure. We need to punt that to the next CRA board meeting.
Understood. So we can, no action needed here and just simply, let's move on to the next. Are there any other final comments from our friends at Kimmy Horn?
I just want to ask for clarification. This is the final conceptual drawing for the civic hub deliverable tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because we can close that, we can check off that box if that's been done.
Yes, sir, the final drawing and those renderings are part of that final deliverable.
And just one question on the civic hub. If we could go to one of those sketches, I wanted to clarify, you were talking about pickleball and tennis. In the configuration, I see what looks like six pickleball and two tennis courts right there. That's not the current footprint. The current footprint has where the six pickleballs are. There's another tennis court to the west of that. So this concept, and correct me if I'm wrong, Molly, this is taking one tennis court out to do this concept.
Yeah, it's about a half, it's about, actually about a half a tennis court, but yes, but in total quantity.
I just wanted to clarify.
You can do one pickleball on one half of the tennis court, but when you do six together, you can smush them together and get more pickleball.
Right.
But yes, we did lose one.
One tennis court?
Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure if you said that we're keeping the same footprint. And you might have said that, you might not, if I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments? Kimmy Horn, thank you. Good?
Apologize for cold and coughing and other things.
I hope you holistically feel well.
I had a note. Nice.
I told you, even a cold isn't gonna stop me from being brief. So I tried to be brief, but, you know.
Thank you. Well, I believe that will conclude item number three. Council, set eight o'clock, about a 10-minute recess. Does that sound good? We'll try to reconvene around 8:15. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Then we had to get Jonathan to the airport.
Yeah.
And Dylan had to leave to go back to North Carolina, so.
Was he driving?
Yeah, yeah, he drove.
Yeah, it was nice. I was totally surprised.
Oh, yeah.
You got her good.
Yeah, she didn't have a clue.
No, she didn't. It was funny.
Yeah. All righty, it is eight fifteen P.M. We are reconvening. I call the meeting back to order. We are in our regular city council meeting. And we just completed the item for action, the presentation. And we are now on to items for discussion, which is, first one's item number four. Guidelines for Advisory Board Member Selection submitted by Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Willis, floor is yours.
Here, I've got a handout. If you take one and pass it down, please. Mr. Mayor, City Council, at the last council meeting, you had brought up some concerns about the vacancies and how we standardize our procedures for those, filling those vacancies. And that is the reason for the item here. I wanted to discuss the guidelines for selection of board members, advisory board members, and whether or not we need to queue up applicants with concern and interest in filling advisory board vacancies from a sufficient pool of applicants. It appears that effort should be made to be consistent in the interview and selection process. In the past, vacancies have been filled from a pool of applicants. Often, that pool consists of an equal number of applicants to the available vacancies or not enough applicants in relation to the current number of vacancies. And in order to be equitable, fair, and justified in selections, it appears that the pool of applicants to be considered should be greater than the number of vacancies on that advisory board. Continued effort should be made for that specific advisory board to advertise vacancies as well as advertise the interview process and listing those individuals seeking to fill said vacancies. The public should have the opportunity to address the applicant's consideration at those board meetings prior to recommendation to city council. And every effort should be made to be respectful of the applicant, their willingness to volunteer their time, and adhere to a high standard of decorum. What I want to know is, are we asking, based upon the last council meeting, to interview all applicants or remove the advisory board from specifying a preference and recommendation? I think we need to either continue on as we have in the past where, when a applicant applies and the board sends a recommendation, we either act on that recommendation with an up or down vote or we allow them to queue up a number of applicants so that they can choose and recommend however many they want. But we need to have some sort of process. And I've handed out a blank copy of the application and also a roster of all the boards, who is on there, what vacancies there are. And just wanted to get everybody's ideas on where they think, what they think, and where we should go with this. Because we need, and we've had comment earlier tonight about moving the goalpost. I think before we consider anybody else, we need to be sure of what the criteria is or should be and how many we're willing to queue up, if any at all, or let the boards decide what they want to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis, for explaining this item. I think if we followed along in the agenda summary before us here, that would be helpful for me in this specific. The way I think you've simplified it is, we have the way we do it today.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have the opportunity to change it. And I think you recommended a process. The process that we follow today, my question would be, what are we following? Is, I know our charter and code talks about advisory boards. Maybe our city attorney can help. Because I think this application that you provided is largely a tool to administer the existing code and state law, I would imagine. And I mean, reading through some of this, this is, this is from our code and charter. So, city attorney, if you would, when we, our procedures today, can you talk a little bit about where they, what we follow and whether this application mirrors that or goes above and beyond that?
Many years ago, the city council adopted a Uniform Board Ordinance that's in two-dash-one-seventy-one of the city code. And it lays out some of the, you know, the general, you know, categories of, you know, requirements for the board, how they conduct their meetings. But it also contains a provision regarding the appointment and removal of board members. And there's, you know, there are, the council at that time determined that there would be certain eligibility requirements. And the application primarily is for purposes of meeting the application requirements in the code and for determining eligibility. For example, there are eligibility requirements for being a registered voter, resident, and/or business owner. And it's all spelled out in that section of the code. You know, there's no language in the code that addresses, other than, there is a language in the code that, of course, the council is the board that must make the appointment to the city boards by majority vote. And how the pool of applicants is obtained, you know, that level of minutia is not in the current Uniform Board Ordinance. Seems to be more of an operational issue. I'm sure the clerk might be able to, since she's the, clerk's the one that does the intake for the applications, you know, how they go about operationalizing, you know, getting candidates to, for the boards and the council to consider.
The two-one-seventy-one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That was, and does this form today? It helps us comply with that. I mean, that's your point.
Yes, is to get that information.
There's certain things that if we don't, you know, we wanted to remove or change, right? We can't because we're bound by what the governing policy, city clerk, I don't know if you wanted to?
And there's also a statutory requirement. And you'll see on the second page, that state reporting requirement. That's been in the Florida statutes for quite some time. So, that's why that request is made.
Where is that?
Page two.
Oh, yes.
Page two, on the back of the handout, says state reporting requirements.
Mm-hmm.
You know, of course, the interest and experience. I mean, that's based on, in the boards that you would like to apply for. That is, you know, based on the number of boards that the council has authorized. And, I mean, it's mirroring the code and getting, you know, information that can be reviewed for, you know, verification with requirements and the candidates, what the candidate's interests are on serving on a board, et cetera.
And so, in that section, two-one-seventy-one E, appointment and removal of members. It says, "All person shall be appointed to and removed from city boards and committees by majority vote of the council and by resolution. Unless otherwise provided in this section, board and committee members shall serve at the pleasure of the city council and may be summarily removed at any time with or without cause." A board or committee appointment shall not be construed as creating or concerning or conferring upon any person, any right or interest in serving on a board or committee, including but not limited to contract liberty, property, invested right. And so, there's, is there anything other than, this is my last question, governing how we make the decisions? That, to me, seems pretty, the criteria that we would apply is at our pleasure? Okay. All righty, it is eight fifteen P.M. We are reconvening. I call the meeting back to order. We are in our regular city council meeting. And we just completed the item for action, the presentation. And we are now on to items for discussion, which is, first one's item number four. Guidelines for Advisory Board Member Selection submitted by Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Willis, floor is yours.
Here, I've got a handout. If you take one and pass it down, please. Mr. Mayor, City Council, at the last council meeting, you had brought up some concerns about the vacancies and how we standardize our procedures for those, filling those vacancies. And that is the reason for the item here. I wanted to discuss the guidelines for selection of board members, advisory board members, and whether or not we need to queue up applicants with concern and interest in filling advisory board vacancies from a sufficient pool of applicants. It appears that effort should be made to be consistent in the interview and selection process. In the past, vacancies have been filled from a pool of applicants. Often, that pool consists of an equal number of applicants to the available vacancies or not enough applicants in relation to the current number of vacancies. And in order to be equitable, fair, and justified in selections, it appears that the pool of applicants to be considered should be greater than the number of vacancies on that advisory board. Continued effort should be made for that specific advisory board to advertise vacancies as well as advertise the interview process and listing those individuals seeking to fill said vacancies. The public should have the opportunity to address the applicant's consideration at those board meetings prior to recommendation to city council. And every effort should be made to be respectful of the applicant, their willingness to volunteer their time, and adhere to a high standard of decorum. What I want to know is, are we asking, based upon the last council meeting, to interview all applicants or remove the advisory board from specifying a preference and recommendation? I think we need to either continue on as we have in the past where, when a applicant applies and the board sends a recommendation, we either act on that recommendation with an up or down vote or we allow them to queue up a number of applicants so that they can choose and recommend however many they want. But we need to have some sort of process. And I've handed out a blank copy of the application and also a roster of all the boards, who is on there, what vacancies there are. And just wanted to get everybody's ideas on where they think, what they think, and where we should go with this. Because we need, and we've had comment earlier tonight about moving the goalpost. I think before we consider anybody else, we need to be sure of what the criteria is or should be and how many we're willing to queue up, if any at all, or let the boards decide what they want to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis, for explaining this item. I think if we followed along in the agenda summary before us here, that would be helpful for me in this specific. The way I think you've simplified it is, we have the way we do it today.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have the opportunity to change it. And I think you recommended a process. The process that we follow today, my question would be, what are we following? Is, I know our charter and code talks about advisory boards. Maybe our city attorney can help. Because I think this application that you provided is largely a tool to administer the existing code and state law, I would imagine. And I mean, reading through some of this, this is, this is from our code and charter. So, city attorney, if you would, when we, our procedures today, can you talk a little bit about where they, what we follow and whether this application mirrors that or goes above and beyond that?
Many years ago, the city council adopted a Uniform Board Ordinance that's in two-dash-one-seventy-one of the city code. And it lays out some of the, you know, the general, you know, categories of, you know, requirements for the board, how they conduct their meetings. But it also contains a provision regarding the appointment and removal of board members. And there's, you know, there are, the council at that time determined that there would be certain eligibility requirements. And the application primarily is for purposes of meeting the application requirements in the code and for determining eligibility. For example, there are eligibility requirements for being a registered voter, resident, and/or business owner. And it's all spelled out in that section of the code. You know, there's no language in the code that addresses, other than, there is a language in the code that, of course, the council is the board that must make the appointment to the city boards by majority vote. And how the pool of applicants is obtained, you know, that level of minutia is not in the current Uniform Board Ordinance. Seems to be more of an operational issue. I'm sure the clerk might be able to, since she's the, clerk's the one that does the intake for the applications, you know, how they go about operationalizing, you know, getting candidates to, for the boards and the council to consider.
The two-one-seventy-one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That was, and does this form today? It helps us comply with that. I mean, that's your point.
Yes, is to get that information.
There's certain things that if we don't, you know, we wanted to remove or change, right? We can't because we're bound by what the governing policy, city clerk, I don't know if you wanted to?
And there's also a statutory requirement. And you'll see on the second page, that state reporting requirement. That's been in the Florida statutes for quite some time. So, that's why that request is made.
Mm-hmm. Where is that?
Page two.
Oh, yes.
Page two, on the back of the handout, says state reporting requirements.
Mm-hmm.
You know, of course, the interest and experience. I mean, that's based on, in the boards that you would like to apply for. That is, you know, based on the number of boards that the council has authorized. And, I mean, it's mirroring the code and getting, you know, information that can be reviewed for, you know, verification with requirements and the candidates, what the candidate's interests are on serving on a board, et cetera.
And so, in that section, two-one-seventy-one E, appointment and removal of members. It says, "All person shall be appointed to and removed from city boards and committees by majority vote of the council and by resolution. Unless otherwise provided in this section, board and committee members shall serve at the pleasure of the city council and may be summarily removed at any time with or without cause." A board or committee appointment shall not be construed as creating or concerning or conferring upon any person, any right or interest in serving on a board or committee, including but not limited to contract liberty, property, invested right. And so, there's, is there anything other than, this is my last question, governing how we make the decisions? That, to me, seems pretty, the criteria that we would apply is at our pleasure?
It's at the city council's pleasure, however, keep in mind, there are requirements for eligibility that a person must meet. So, if you look at sub-paragraph C of that section I referenced, it says, "Any person nominated, elected, or appointed to serve on the board or committee of the city shall satisfy the following requirements."
Mm-hmm.
So, got to complete the board application as prescribed by the council, consent to standard criminal background check, be a resident and registered voter or business owner as defined in this section of the code, unless the council, you know, waives that requirement. And there's, you know, some language about how to waive. And have never been convicted or found guilty, regardless of adjudication of a felony, unless their civil rights have been restored. And then complete interviews with the board or committee on which the person is seeking appointment and with the city council. And there's some limitations on the number of non-residents serving on boards and committees, too, that the council established quite some time ago.
So, when we review the application, by them completing it, that's fulfilling some of the things we are required to follow. That information is then, if met, it doesn't end there. If they qualify and they meet all that criteria, there's still a component where the council, just because you've met all the criteria, we're not required to appoint someone. They're subject to an interview. We, the answers to those questions, and in some cases recently where we've served in capacity, there's internal knowledge about where some candidates were meeting for the first time. Thank you. That was, that was what I wanted to understand was?
Counsel's discretion, mayor.
Okay.
You know, it's like, you know, someone applying for a job. You know, the interview with their employer doesn't mean they're going to get the job.
I like the idea, Councilmember Willis, just to go with having a pool of applicants. I really do. I think the last applicant, former councilmember Raymond who applied, that position was, has, that board has been operating with six members, I think, for over a year, if I remember. It was a long time. And I did not know that. And so, they should be operating with seven. And so, on the front end also, as you wrote in your thing, being able to promote and to take every effort should be made that specific, that we're advertising, that would really help. And I think the process today is, the burden is really on the director of that level to kind of manage the boards. When a vacancy occurs, the city clerk and everyone is receiving applications. And when a vacancy happens, they go to their bank. And if they have one, it goes forward. And what you're saying is, is we could consider, hey, we want a minimum of two or three?
I'm just merely putting it out there as an option. I'm not advocating it.
Sure, but is that?
Because you don't know how long it's going to take to get applicants. Like you said, that particular board had a vacancy for over a year. Well, that is not Ms. Raymond's fault.
No.
That's, you know, if you don't get the applicants, you know, and they don't know when they're going to get another applicant. And if you want them to operate at full capacity, you have to address it as we get applicants. Now, whether you agree with someone being on a board, that's your own personal option. And I think at a minimum, we should have at least, just on this past instance, proceeded to vote either up or down on it. And, but I think, I think moving forward, we need to let those boards handle their own business. I think moving forward, we need to let those boards handle their own business and but not keep moving, like someone said earlier, moving the goalpost, but but if we're going to do something, we need to, to clarify it and codify it so that everybody knows. Now, I did find out this evening before council meeting started that city clerk's assistant director has started advertising these on the, outside on the board, that they're putting it out there of what, who is, what boards have vacancies and how many and all of that. So that kind of addresses that point of advertising, but that was already done internally.
I agree. I mean, this board, my understanding had sat empty almost two years. And again, it's not Ms. Raymond's fault. And I would say this about any applicant, whether it was Ms. Raymond or not. They were approved with a board. I've never known, and I've asked, and I don't know that we've ever, this board has ever disapproved of anyone trying to volunteer. There's applicants I didn't particularly like, but I didn't let my personal opinion of them. They wanted to volunteer. They, the board approved of them. I approved them. So I don't think our personal, you know, feelings should get in it or be involved in it. And again, I agree, we don't know when the next applicant's going to be. So if we say we want a pool, are we going to sit for two years until we get a pool? You know, I mean, and then the next applicant had applied, but there's a position that's going to be coming available from my understanding. So why let that, why not let that applicant get that position in the future? That applicant that I, I have their, the other applicant, Ms. Freeman, I have her application. It was received March eighteenth, the day before. The, the city clerk received it March eighteenth, the day before our meeting. They didn't receive it a week before, as the, Ms. Freeman had stated. So at that point, Ms. Raymond had already applied. She'd been approved. She was volunteering her services. I think we should honor the board's opinion and respect their opinion, whether it's Ms. Raymond or whatever applicant's been in the past or going to be here in the future.
But there's no scenario that you can think of where if the board, the board doesn't approve, they recommend approval. But if they recommend approval, especially if it's a five oh, I'm not, that we should honor that. There's not a circumstance where someone does not seem like they would serve at our pleasure?
Well, depending, our pleasure is that personal, but because I think that person needed to at least have a vote. They deserve to have the vote. And, you know, depending what that vote is, is whether they are or not. I mean, I, I don't think, there's not a time that they can't. I just don't think it's personal that because they disagree with you or have disagreed with you on the past. That has nothing to do with their, their services on the board.
Disagreed on this side of the dais. They're professional decisions.
And, and you said that that night.
Yeah.
You did. So that should not, to me, that being on a board is not going to affect this dais.
I respectfully disagree. I think it's directly, we're, this board takes recommendations from those boards. And that's okay. It, it, it was, there has never been, we still have not voted against a candidate. I mean, and I agree with you. I'm not aware of any incident, incident where we have. I think that night, if I go back, I remember asking and saying, what do, you know, essentially, what do we do or something to the effect? And I think we were saying, I think she's withdrew.
I asked for a vote that, I, I did ask for a vote that night. I did, again, I did not put a motion on the table, but I was saying we needed to take a vote that night.
I remember feeling that, and I'm not saying, it sounds like that wasn't your position, that, that she had withdrew her application. In an interview, if somebody walks out of an interview, I, I, when I've applied for, for, for jobs, I would never walk out of an interview and think that I'm going to get that job. I think what we saw last meeting is exactly what I'm concerned about.
I think this dais showed disrespect to her and that the way that she was treated and some of the comments that were made, I can understand.
What are those comments? Because Ms. Vice Chair, Ms. Mary Marschella said that some comments were inappropriate. Do you know what comments were inappropriate?
I think that it was your personal, that she disagreed with you. I mean,
I really want to understand what the inappropriate comment was.
That you were personal.
What, what did I do that? What do you mean I was personal?
You basically said that you've been on the dais and that you've had, I don't know the exact wording.
Sure.
But you had agreed on certain occasions and then other times you guys had differences.
And you think that's personal?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, we missed, we
It was accused that she would be on there and have political, it evolved the elections of this. The, the board does not involve, that board does not involve elections.
Okay, so, and I'll just finish. On, on the profession, those are professional. If I said, I don't like the way the, the, the car, the way they drive their car up and down my street, or their loud barking dog next door, or those are personal.
Attacking somebody's
But, but literally, the city of Cape Canaveral business, we sat and both had, were elected at the same time. It could not have been more professional on what the priorities are of this city. And so I don't, I never viewed that as personal. And I'm not going to sit up here and say that, I mean, what's the point of appointing? If we're supposed to take all recommendations, what is our role? And I think that interview is there for an opportunity to, if you did have concerns and you didn't have an interview process, the interview process allows us to, to shed light on the issues. And this candidate walked out of the interview, and if I understand, justified in your eyes, because I made it personal in your eyes, even though I respectfully disagree. And the second thing was that political statements were made. I think that might have been very, were there any other things? And I remember that general conversation. I don't think that those are, those were inappropriate.
I just felt like she, I, I don't know. So
If there's ever been inappropriateness, I'm, I'm not going to beat around the bush. The candidate has demonstrated some of the greatest levels of inappropriateness in all aspects of elections being elected to and to, after becoming elected, to putting things on the record and free to do that, elected by the people. But that time came to an end. And that value system that I shared on those particular issues, as I said that night, could not have been in more contrast. And so I cannot say that if I, I have to draw the line somewhere in, in this process. And we did not vote on Ms. Raymond. But I will say it again, if the opportunity comes, unless she wants to re-interview, I'm happy to go through that. But the interview that we had, she walked out. And I'm not, it sounds like tonight she made it clear that she was not withdrawing her application. She wants us to take action. I'm happy to take action. If you want to do that, at this, a particular item, if it holds relevance and doesn't hurt the integrity of council member Willis's goals, I'm, I'm ready to get that put behind us if we want to do that.
Can I ask a question? And as long as I've been on this dais and we've interviewed people, we have never asked questions of that to her. We've, we've always said, thank you very much. We appreciate your service, da, da, da. We have never sat there and said different and made comments about that applicant. We have, you know, so
I've never had an applicant that needed it.
But we were going by the board's recommendation and we did not ask, you know, questions that we could have.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Yeah, I, I usually try to watch the different board meetings. And what was concerning to me was when I watched the board meeting that she was interviewed and her comment, I, I'm not going to say verbatim, but the comment that she made when she was asked what, as a council person with your experience, could you bring to this board? And she said, and again, not verbatim, that boards need to stay in their lane and council needs to stay in their lane and listen to what staff says. And to me, that's the wrong message of a board. We want the board's ideas. We want their input. We don't want them to stay in a lane. They're our close touch to the residents and their ideas out there, and they're bringing them to the board and eventually they come to us. So we don't want them to stay in their lane. And that was my question to, to her was, why, why would you say that? And is that the kind of attitude? Nothing against Angela. She's a great lady. But do we need her attitude influencing that board with that kind of attitude? That was my concern. And I think, you know, when we get applicants, you see sometimes that they applied in, I'm just using an example, May, and it doesn't come to us until June or July. You know, what is the process? Do we, does it hold over till the next meeting? Do we do it, like, somebody applies and they get, you know, there's a board meeting and then they come to us. I just think that, you know, maybe we need to figure out a definite process, have more than one applicant. And also, at the end of the meeting, she said, and I asked the attorney, like, I gave him a note, like, do we make a motion? And he said she withdrew. She said, I'm out of here. I don't even want it. So, I mean, so we took no action. But that was my concern. And that's why, like, usually when you watch the interview at the board level, it's usually pretty good. But I was really concerned about her, her answer to that question. Excuse me. And it was kind of scary the way she said, you got to stay in your lane, like, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Member Jackson?
Yes, and I know that the statement about it, the elections, that was my comment. And my comment, I clearly said, I encourage everyone on this dais, as well as everyone listening to this or in this audience, go back and watch the video. I clearly said, I don't feel comfortable with any ex-council member until we get this repaired. That was my statement. I said that there was a perception, and there was a perception in this last election, and I discussed that perception. So there was a perception for this. So here's the thing. Any council member is not, I was not signaling Angela. I was not. This is something that we as a council need to take care of. The Florida Lega City says it. It is literally in our state statutes. So in, well, and actually the, the Florida constitution. According to Article two of the Florida constitution, a public office is a public trust. And I take that seriously. The citizens here elected me, okay? It states that the people shall have the right to secure and sustain trust against abuse. I knew of a situation where people thought that perception had happened. Okay, so I took action. Preventing and avoiding conflicts of interest is extremely important for any public official. So I wanted to address the situation that I'd been told has happened numerous times in the past during election cycles with obtaining our Friday Fest booth and in hopes that we could come together and take care of that first. Okay, so in no way, shape, or form, I've seen alleged in things, I have heard someone give, you know, that this was said or that was said. No, go back and watch the video. I said, any councilman, so that, or council member, so that we will not have that perception. It should be an easy fix. Shouldn't have gotten, it shouldn't have gone the way that it did. Shouldn't have resulted in someone running out of the room. This is an easy fix. We, we should be able to work with city manager and city attorney to get the process fixed. That's why I've added it to the agenda as well. So whereas I, I believe that what we're saying is correct, we need to have clear, clear guidelines on this. We're seeing right here in our code that it is at the pleasure of council. And I have one other question. Have we had any new applicants, Todd, since this occurred last time?
I'll defer to the city clerk. She keeps those records.
Okay. And how many? Well, one, two, ten, I mean.
Since the date of the interview?
Since the date of the interview. And, and the reason I'm asking this is it will clear, if we had an increase of applicants and we didn't have this advertised, that shows a deficiency in just the way that we were handling it. And Mayor Morrison, in the last council meeting, when we did the interview, he discussed at length how long that term was and those things. We need to make this, these board positions available for our residents to be able to step up and fill.
Excuse me, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven active applications in our active folder.
And we had two last time. So we've had an increase in applications.
And I, I'd like to make clarification about how we advertise on our marquee. For years since I've been here, before we even had an electronic marquee, we advertise that there are openings on our boards. And we don't necessarily always put specific boards. If it's really low, then we will do that. But we have consistently advertised on our marquee for board openings. So
Did we change the way we put it up there this time, city clerk?
We did to please the council and specifically put, you know, which boards are, have openings. But I can tell you, I've been here since twenty, two thousand and seven, and it's not easy getting people to apply.
And I've seen that before in the past, just having been, before I was on council.
Something we don't really have control over.
But the thing that we are, that we may have, that might have impacted that number. So we have a new demographic of residents now. They're from other areas. So when we say that in the past, we didn't get applicants, if we're not putting them out there where people will know, those new residents may not want to step up and serve. Also, we might have had people that have retired since the pandemic that are, or that are working from home. So there's been changes in our world that could have changed that situation. But it's, we obviously have a pool of people to choose from now. And so I'm appreciative to, to Congress, or to Councilman Willis for putting this on so that we can get something solidified. If this isn't anything personal, we should be able to choose the best candidate based on their skill set. That's my
Are you, you said earlier, are you still against ex-council members being on boards?
Not, my next agenda item is to talk about the Friday Fest process. If we can get that fixed, I think that any council member should be able to serve. That was my statement last month that was taken out of context and then everything blew up. So I'm not going to allow people to put words in my mouth. I will not do that. It's on video.
Do you understand we have ex-council members on boards now, on a board now?
And I'm addressing a problem that is a perception problem from our state constitution saying, we have a public trust. And if there's a perception problem that I know, that someone thinks something is not right, it is my duty, it's my fiduciary duty to address it. And I tried to do that. I did not mention Ms. Raymond. I said, any council member, and I believe that. And I believe it can be fixed. We need our city attorney's help. We need Todd's help. We need the people on this. Council's help to make sure that we have this all taken care of where anyone can serve if they want. And that's the way I feel about that.
So my question in the future is, are we not going to take the recommendation or listen to the recommendation of the board? Does that
That question, just to the council?
Yeah, in general, does that have any effect? Or is that, I mean, before we've always, we've said for this board and
Yeah, in general, does that have any effect or is that, I mean, before we've always, we've said for this board and other boards that we should, we recommend that we listen to the board, you know, that, or excuse me, they, we should listen to the recommendations of the board. So I just want to know if in fact, the board's, uh, recommendation means something or does not mean anything?
Uh, listening to the board, yes. Acting on what the board is recommending, which I think is, what you mean by listen is to follow the board? No, I think we have a responsibility to do our due diligence and that board's, uh, interview is obviously valuable to Mayor Pro Tim. I watched that too, I found it valuable. And then their recommendation, uh, they, they didn't sit in my shoes, they didn't have the perspective that I have and, uh, or Mayor Pro Tim or any one of us who sat with him. And so that, that to me is very valuable. We definitely need to take the boards, but that doesn't mean we're always going to agree with them. Otherwise, what's our role? I mean, give them the ability to appoint if that's, I mean, just, so that's what I call a rubber stamp. And I don't want to go to that. We, we, we have ran it that way, Councilmember Davis, and as Councilmember Willis is bringing. I mean, it's been, you have the option pretty much of one. And it's like, well, yeah, of course, and I think the board's in the same, you're the only one I see. Um, and it, you know, it sat vacant for two years and then they step in and, and it's, yes. You sort of feel compelled to, to, to do it and, and while we're thankful for it, I'm going, I mean, at what point do we value and put weight on the interview process and then, and the, and the internal knowledge? And so, uh, yeah. Councilmember Willis, I, my, my comments are, I would like to pursue a process. And I did say, and if I remember, I would not support that night, Councilmember Raymond, not um, until it was and. It's not dependent on changing the process so we can write rules that she would have to jump over, absolutely not. I, I'm saying I would vote against today, and, and if, if that's what we want to do, and I still think we should make the improvement, uh, some improvements. And I would start with, uh, some of the ones you suggested and maybe looking at other communities and piggybacking off their procedures. But whatever method allows us to see a few more than, than one candidate and maybe like you said, it's one still comes as a recommendation out of the pool. I, I think that's a good start, is we still get one recommendation, but we know city staff worked through until they were able to get a couple. And to overcome the time issue, what happens if we don't get the second? I think that's, uh, that I'd be interested in going after so much time, there is kind of this next gear we need to put it into and say, hey, we've been at this for 60 days, we still only have one applicant. Well, at 90 days, if we only have one, I'd be okay with going with the one, but we do some extra effort there in those final 30 days that maybe mirrored what we did here. And I'll say it, sometimes a particular candidate running will attract a lot more people to come up and run. And so that, I think, had something to do with it too.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have some more comments.
Sure.
I know it, we all on this dais, um, have it from time to time gone against an advisory board's recommendation for a multitude of things. And we vote what we know and what we have discovered. And I have no problem with that. And I don't want to rubber stamp an, a, an advisory board just because they say it. If I'm opposed to it, then I'll vote opposed to it. What I'm wanting is consistency in everything. In consistency in our boards and consistency in our actions. And I will bring up the change in the minutes, concerns regarding a led, oh, excuse me, potential conflicts of interest with the applicant's involvement in past city council meeting discussion regarding pickleball versus tennis. Are we supposed to consider people's preferences? Are we supposed to consider a potential conflict of interest? If that's the case, Ms. Jackson, Councilmember Jackson, you deal with short-term rentals. Are we supposed to discount your opinion as a conflict of interest? That's, we need to be consistent. And if we're not going to adhere to it ourselves, don't require it of someone else. That's all I'm wanting.
Okay, so consistency, uh, we did not vote yes or no. I think that it, that might have been an inconsistency, right? I, I would agree. Show me another time where we, we did not take action. And so the burden to take action from our city attorney, and I do not disagree with him, and certainly no one had an absolute unless Councilmember Raymond made it clear, I think today that wasn't her intent. But in that moment, I can't look citizens in the eyes and say, I appointed the person that walked out of the meeting. And so I, had we said, you know what, we're going to hold, we'll get back to appointing, that would have been an inconsistency, I think, compared to, to what we've done. I don't know if it's in conflict, but taking action is important so we don't string people along. So yes, whatever we can do to get a pool of candidates or, or a minimum, it is, is good and we cannot be inconsistent. What, was there something inconsistent here other than?
Mr. Mayor.
That, yes.
I think a lot of that, what Councilman Will, uh, Councilman Willis is discussing is the fact that I said there could be a, a perceived conflict of interest between pickleball and tennis. Because, and in that recorded meeting last time, I mentioned that I didn't feel comfortable with that, that Angela had the prior fall discussed the fact that she was a tennis player and that there was a rivalry going on between tennis, uh, getting access to a tennis court or a pickleball court. So that's what my situation was. Now, what, uh, and from what Councilmember Willis just said, he's worried that me having a business of short-term rentals, um, is some type of conflict of interest. Now, I haven't ac, sat up here and asked everyone, please send your family to my short-term rental business. I have made no type of effort to promote my business at all. And I'm not really involved with anything, actually, I've turned people in since we've gotten Duckard. So, um, for not following our minimum six-night rentals. So that, just me being in business in some way does not create a conflict of interest. The problem with, that I felt, and like I said, it was a potential. I did not say there was one, I said it was a potential, that there could potentially be. But she brought it to council in the fall, discussing the fact that there was a rivalry going with tennis and she wanted to make sure tennis was covered. Go back and look at meetings, I was in the meeting that time. So I think that might be what Councilmember Willis was pointing to on consistencies, was that, and he wants it to be consistent. Um, you know, with, then I don't see how those two comparisons are similar, but that's my interpretation, am I wrong?
We all have our own preferences. But, um, you know, I agree, you didn't ever advocate going to your rentals, that's not the issue. The issue is that, that is what you do. Could it potentially be a conflict? Maybe, I'm not going to say it, but, uh, didn't preclude you from being here.
And everyone on, everyone here has a job?
Uh, no, this is my job.
Well, you're retired, so that's your job. The rest of us have jobs.
Yeah.
Mickey works at the VFW and Kim and Healthcare. If there's no action that creates a conflict of interest.
But they are not the ones that said potential conflict of interest in the meetings of, in the minutes of the last.
Conflict of interest directly relates to the rec center. The rec center has the same person over it as the board. So to me, that could, could end up being a perceived conflict of interest if one or the other of the stated two groups that are having a problem and rivalry ended up getting twisted that they didn't get what they wanted. Um, that's why I wanted all of these things addressed so that they would be taken care of. It shouldn't be this hard.
If there was a legitimate conflict of interest, our city attorney has advised on these in the past, they'd need to remove themselves from the vote. If the conflict of, uh, interest comes up so prevalent, so much, there are times when it might make sense that they would not be fit for that board. I think, uh, identifying potential conflicts of interest is a healthy thing to do. We all could be in a circumstance where there's, here's a scenario, you know, where you're about to vote on something. We have a responsibility to, to address that. And, and I, we take annual ethics trainings on those things to make sure we do. And I didn't ever sense that because, uh, you know, there, there's an interest. I mean, people should take their interest and try to get on advisory boards and advocate for tennis and pickleball. That to me is, is not a major issue. However, uh, it's, it is, it's a different process from how you sit here and, and elected by the people and then we, we appoint. Conflicts of interest are, that, that has been brought up by the subject candidate for, uh, P and Z, put on the agenda several times. That conflict of interest card was, was raised a few times. And I think until she's voting on something there, right? Or we foresee that she would essentially not be able to participate in the majority of votes, that would be an issue. But I can't think of a reasonable conflict of interest. You're right, could be. I trust, one thing she does, if she has the training, she would know to consult and to remove. But I did not sense that that was a major issue for you. It was just a.
I, I had two concerns.
Councilmember Davis, I see you.
Yeah, I had two concerns and I stated those concerns. I wanted to look at how we handled the second one. I stated that with, with Friday Fest. And a board member, I said, any board member, I said, perception. And literally, it's in our constitution that that's what we're supposed to do as public servants. We've got the public trust in our hands. And so you know what, I am trying to do my fiduciary duty if that's something that's of a concern to me. It was brought to me by three different people. And I want to make sure that we as a city don't put ourselves out that way to create a negative connotation in any way as far as public trust is concerned. We're all elected officials and we're serving the people. And it should have been a simple conversation. I'm very sorry that it, that it was misconstrued as a personal thing because I specifically say on video, any council member and any board related to that, let's get it fixed.
Councilmember Davis?
I have two things. First of all, in a big scheme of this thing where we're deciding what we're going to do with the Civic Hub, how important is tennis and pickleball? I mean, there may be somebody else on the, on the ward that says, I love racquetball, I don't want them tearing down the racquetball court. That's something the board will decide, that's a vote they'll take, that's something we, we will consider. I, I mean, we're talking pickleball and tennis. I don't, you know, you give so, you know, I don't want to give, I'm not saying Raymond, we want to get, you're giving people so much credit. How do you know that's going to be a conflict? How do you know that, that she's going to do this and do that? We can't assume that about anybody. I could say Mary, Mary loves racquetball. Okay, so she's going to fight so we don't tear it down. Or so-and-so loves shuffleboard, so there's going to be a fight. Is that a conflict of interest because they're fighting for what they think would, is better or what they prefer to do? So my second, you know, it's, we're making a big deal out of tennis and, and pickleball. Second, you ask for consistencies. We were interviewing her and we were going to take a vote. It's the first time that I've seen, and I'm not saying it hasn't happened, I'm just saying that I've seen or I've been aware of, that all of a sudden in the middle of taking a vote on a, a candidate, we, oh, we're going to change, we should change the process. You know, we need to consider changing the process and doing this and doing that. If that's the case, we need to do that change process before that applicant became available. Or two, after we decided against or for, whatever that way, whatever the vote should be. But in the middle of when an applicant is applying and we're taking a vote, it should not be in the middle. Well, we need to change the process, we need to have, you know, whatever, especially when this is, this board has been open for two years or almost two years, I don't know the exact date, so don't quote me. So that was an inconsistency. We should have done it before, if we thought the, the, we needed to change our, our policy on how we do this, we should have done it after. We should have not done it during the interview of that applicant. So, I mean, that's none of, I, and I'm not referring just to Raymond and, and Ms. Raymond. I'm referring to any applicant in the middle of the, the whole process and we can't just change it. So that's, that's my two points.
So are we not allowed to reject a candidate or question them?
I think we're clear that with or without cause, we, we, a majority of the council decides who sits on those boards.
I'm not saying you can't question her, I'm just saying, you know, we were trying to discuss changing the policy of how we're going to do this. That shouldn't be done in the middle of a, a process.
We didn't change the policy, we were just. We, oh, well, we were, we were just. We were discussing, um, as a council, her application when she got upset and left.
No, but, but during that timeframe, it was brought up that we need to consider changing the policy of how we, or not those exact words, but the procedure or whatever, and how we do the applicants and how we take their applications. So that should have been done before or done after, not during that. That's all I have to say.
And we need to move on, Mayor Pro Tim calling?
I just, um, I think that that, it was an, uh, consent, on the consent agenda and you pulled it. So that means we discuss it, you know, we just didn't pass it through. And then if, if, you know, as far as the boards go, if, if the, I, I've been on the board and when you, when an applicant comes in, you're just so glad to have another volunteer that you're going to just pass it through. But when they ask them questions and then the council looks at the answers they gave and they're not consistent with the vision of the city or the mission or whatever, then the council at their pleasure has the right to, uh, you know, not vote them in. And, and if you guys look at the, um, the minutes, it said, discussion continued regarding the desire to better understand the city's volunteer advisory board process. So I think that's important, we get that right.
There's that?
It's, um, in the minutes.
Oh, okay. I thought it was in the agenda.
And then, uh, you know, the desire of the applicant to, uh, pick up the end of the term. And, um, then it says, the city attorney advised council that no action is necessary. The applicant left the impression of withdrawal upon leaving the meeting. So no council action was taken. I mean, I, I don't, she didn't like the way the questions were going and, and she left. So to me, that's withdrawing. If she wants to start over again and have another application or we work through this process and get it where, like Dawn says, consistency, let's give it back to the staff, figure it out and, um, and move on.
I agree, and thank you for reminding us of the minutes. I do not want to touch the section in our, are we talking about changing our, our code?
I don't think there's anything in our code that says how many applicants we have to look at.
I didn't, I don't think city attorney went over that, yeah. So would that be something we want to look into?
I think it, we could consider it.
But if you don't have people applying, then what are you going to do? Wait and let the board work one person, two person, you know, three people short?
They have been doing that.
I know, but if you have people, and I'm not just referring to Ms. Raymond, if you have people that are applying that passed the board, then, then why don't we consider them? You do, I don't think you should wait a half a year and say, oh, no, we can't, you know, we can't say, or we can't bring the people forward in front of council until we have three or five people applied. We may never have three or five people that apply. So why do you have to wait six months? Why do you have to wait a year?
What if it works? What if we do get three?
Well, then that's fine, but what happens when it, I don't have a problem with that. But what happens when it doesn't?
Then that. We should, I addressed that earlier, I think. Oh, and I, I agree, councilmember Davis. We should set a time limit on it. And at the end of that time, I do think we should pursue. And I think that is valid. It could have, we could have one candidate after, and, and that's not right to do to the candidate. What I'm saying in this circumstance is I would not support that candidate by themselves unless we had to fill that board. And our city attorney says you, you have to run with a minimum of seven. Now, our code does talk about it's a seven-person board, right? And so maybe one way to look at it is seven-person board. Uh, this is all we have as coun, councilmember. It's been ninety days. Uh.
I'm not saying you have to put them on if they don't approve, you know, do the process and they get approved by the board. We don't, the board doesn't have to recommend them if they don't want them. I'm not saying they have to automatically because there's nobody else have to be put on. But when the board recommends uh, an applicant, then they need to be considered.
I would be interested in adding language to try for, to get some sort of minimum criteria. And then address councilmember Davis's concern on, well, what a time. I think we could incorporate that into the language as well. And it would be a better step, I think, for us to take. And um, looking at other codes to, or comparative policy from other cities if they have it. But the, the, the majority of the council, for any reason, will decide. I think what we're talking about is if it was a quorum issue, yes, I, I would have looked at that totally different, right? They have to be able to do business, but they did it without two years and then right when she gets off, she's applying, no wasted time. I think that's awesome. But I know that there has been some interest out in the community about boards. And I also know that if there's ever been a time for me, that in that board, under these circumstances, it didn't make sense for, 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 for me. And so I welcome her to come back, uh, but again, she walked out of an interview. I mean, really, that's, that's a non-starter. So that wasn't a, due to our process or our process was lacking. But I do think we could start there. So if you want direction, I would uh, come back with some proposed language that would help us have uh, more options and a, apply that so that we're not stuck in this, the only one we've got cycle, the only one we have. And the, and the boards feel, I think, the same way and is, okay. Uh, we're, we're going to go through and then we're sort of handcuffed, we're on a, on a roller coaster. Uh, because me, I agree with our city clerk. It is difficult. We've all tried to just get volunteers for anything. It's hard. And yet, and so that's it. Councilmember Willis?
No, I think we've uh, beat about this thing a fair amount, so let's move on to the next.
Thank you. It is a, uh, it is appreciated that.
We need direction.
Do you want, do you want, are you asking or is there consensus to try to come up with some code language? Or do you want to just deal with this from an operational standpoint?
I think that we could ask staff for some code language, um, some timelines, maybe, uh, you know, more consistency.
Do we necessarily need code or just an administrative effort?
That's what I mean by op, operational. I mean, it is a chronic problem in most cities. Vacancies happen all the time. And you have to take a look at, well, it might be helpful if, if from an administrative standpoint that, you know, when vacancies um, are occur. I mean, you have to take a multifaceted approach to try to find as many candidates as you, as you can to fill the vacancy. I would start by making sure that council is notified of the vacancy. And it's on, council has the ability to try to refer people uh, to the clerk's office to fill that position. The board members may have an acquaintance that they may want to refer. The, the clerk can certainly advertise um, in appropriate places of the vacancy. And perhaps the, from an administrative standpoint, once that vacancies occur, you know, that there's a mid, like a little time period to allow the council, the board in advertising to hopefully work its magic and increase the pool of potential candidates to fill. At which point the, the council will have choices rather than just be limited to one person to fill one vacancy. But frankly, at, a lot of times after a certain period of time, you may not have any candidates that want to serve on the board. Or you may have one vacancy and just one person wants to volunteer. Then, you know, does the council, you know, then probably want to consider filling the vacancy rather than leaving it open because, you know, the law generally doesn't favor vacancies on boards, right? Because the, you want the boards to conduct the business. They don't have to have a complete roster, but generally they need to have a quorum of the, of the total composition. That has been a historical problem with the Board of Adjustment, trying to even have a quorum that can meet to conduct business. So I mean, those are just some suggestions. It, it's just, it's tough to find volunteers for city boards.
I, I would prefer that solution. Um, and to try to put a time limit on the accumulation of applicants. I don't want it to go too long. I know when I was on the bed board, we had three people. We could never have a quorum. So it just, we couldn't get people.
But it starts with, you know, notifying. You know, staff can make sure the board's notified there's a vacancy. They know, you know, inherently from being there. But there is a vacancy, trying to fill. The council's advised that there's a vacancy. So try to, try to find ways to increase the pool. And you all have a stake in it too. I mean, refer somebody in to serve on a, on a board. Nothing wrong with that.
And, and may I say that our rosters online on our city website clearly shows vacancies. So anybody can just go straight to those rosters or contact my office anytime they want to find out what vacancies are available.
Well, in, in the handout, you all have the rosters and the vacancies, so. But I think if, if we can get some feedback from the directors who head up boards, what they think might be reasonable would be helpful.
If we took and, and went back through tonight, General, I think you've heard a desire to, to try and overcome some of these issues. I, I, I think that's good. Why don't we see if we can get some help? And maybe the recommendation is it's not a policy change, but in, in the next couple of meetings, could city, could city staff come back with some of the ideas we heard tonight to help really in, improve this? Not specifically any direction, but I think if you had to hear tonight, some of the issues, keep more, keep it more broad and.
I, I think you hit it pretty well a few minutes ago. We tend to, when we find ourselves in uncharted territory, recognize that we're trying to build a wheel. Maybe there's somebody else who already built this wheel. Maybe there's better practices out there. So I, I think the idea of researching some other cities. Um, I know that the city clerks organization is very tight-knit quote, um, group that shares things and best practices and whatnot. And I think asking for a copy of their board procedures, looking at it through, from the city clerks organization, just look what other processes are there, are out there. Maybe there's lots, maybe there's none. I don't know. But let's, let's look out there and, and just bring this information back to council and see if there's a better process out there.
How does that sound?
Sounds good. Also, you know, you can compare it similarly to filling a position. Because if you have a position that's in dire need, you don't stop if you don't get the right applicant as your first one. So there may be steps that you have to incorporate in to generate more interest. So comparing is a good, good idea.
Well, thank you.
So how about this for a consensus to reach out to other cities for best practices? Make it nice and neat.
Yes, and when ready.
Yeah, just submit.
Councilmember Willis, I think is driving this one, so.
Yeah, just submit them to, to council. Here's what we found. Here's what's out there.
Thank you. Any opposed to that?
No.
There is not, I think, consensus on what our city clerk read, so thank you. Okay, so uh, we do need to move along. Um.
And this one, I.
Yep, this one's uh, yours, uh, councilmember Jackson, which is uh, this number five, for those listening, a discussion of current policy for Friday Fest booths. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you. So this brought up, you know, bad things for us in the last meeting. And that's, as I said, that wasn't my intention. Um, I know that Friday Fest is a challenge because the booths are, they book out in advance, quite in advance, six months and things like that. And um, some people may not qualify to run for council um, until August. So what I'm looking at is to, in order to, for us to make sure that we do not give the perception in any way, shape or form, that anyone is picking a winner or loser in this game, that we find some type of an alternative so that people that are running for council can be afforded booths. And that makes it difficult because of the fact that they do qualify all the way into Au- August. So knowing, um, knowing that this was a perception in our last election, I would like to see what we could do to the current policy in order to maybe make some changes and accommodate candidates being able to get booths. And I've spoken with our city attorney. We have to be careful and I'll let him uh, speak to First Amendment rights. But surely with this group of intelligent people we have on this dais, that we ought to be able to come up with something that will work so that we always are able to get our candidates a booth when they're running for office.
Financially support?
No.
Or, okay, so, so.
Just afford them the ability to.
Guarantee, a, a reserved guaranteed space upon payment?
I, I like the idea, although Anthony had some um, feedback for it. But I like the idea of holding back a certain number of booths. And then if people did qualify, you could ask them and say, do you want the booth or not? Um, if they didn't, then release it and that way people that are on the waitlist, because there's a waitlist that you can sign up for online, that way they could um, you know, be contacted and the booth could be utilized by a vendor. Um, but Anthony will talk to you about First Amendment rights, if you don't mind, City Attorney. Sure.
Uh, not advisable. The way the city currently has its policy set up with respect to vendor booths and the reservation system, and I'm sure staff can speak to the, the technical aspects of the vet, the reservation system. But the council does allow um, you know, businesses and um, artists to sell their wares and crafts. But also as a provision in the current policy that a vendor may include a person or entity that desires to bring awareness to local charitable, religious and political issues, such as charitable organizations, religious institutions, candidates running for elected office and petition organizers for bona fide ballot initiatives. So you have a provision in the existing policy that opens the vendor booths up to protected activities. So First Amendment is going to apply. You can't pick who or what. You know, eventually someday you are going to be put in a, in a box. Um, because you're dealing with protected, protected activities and the city can't give preference to one over another. The city can't give preference to Cape Canaveral city council members over some other elected official or some other organization where booths are eligible. So in my opinion, it needs to be very content neutral from a, from a subject matter standpoint in terms of the vendor, type of vendor. Um, and you can't discriminate against viewpoint. So there, there's just not going to be a way to, to justify those types of um, you know, distinctions based on viewpoint and content. The, the constitution's going to prohibit that the way this is currently structured. On the other hand, there may be some very, there may be some tweaks that the, the, the city may want to make regarding the, when the booths become available, right? So um, you know, maybe, you know, and, and I know, I think there's thirty-five total vendor booths. And I think the city opens up the reservation system effective every, I think, January one of every year. So you, you know, the city has a first in time, I mean, a first, first come, first served policy. And that is because of constitutional limitations based on this current policy. So, but you're opening up all of the vendor booths the first of the year. And your new businesses that come to town may be in August or candidates that finally figure out that they're going to qualify for some office that may be interested in a booth. They don't know or may not exist um, until later on in the year. And your early birds have the potential of s, taking all of the vendor booths, right? So maybe, maybe in order to, you know, protect the, perhaps the new businesses that may come to town or those that, you know, maybe you reserve some of them to be opened up, you know, later rather than opening them all up at the same time in January. You know, besides the city also, once the vendor submits an application, it's on file for, for, for a year. And, you know, those vendors during the course of, course of the year, um, especially, you know, that file, especially at the beginning, you know, they are in a better position to be, you know, first come, first served, right? There may be an existing business, an existing organization for years, you know, they, they can plan ahead. You know, a new business that operate, opens up in August, I mean, they're not planning ahead for a vendor booth in January of the same year. They, they worried about just getting up, operating and then they say, hey, oh, there's a vendor booth available. Maybe I'll go and try to promote, promote my business once I, once I started and created in August, right? They may want to come in in September or October. So that's one suggestion to try to stay with the first come, first served. Is maybe just opening some of those boo, booths up later in the, in the year rather than all at once. That's one suggestion, assuming you even want to keep this policy of opening up vendor booths to protected activities.
May I ask a question? Um, Molly, January first, when all these booths open up, are we full at the beginning of the year? Are there still vacancies come the end of the year or when do they fill up, if they fill up?
It varies. Um, uh, this year for twenty twenty-four as an example, we sold out on our food vendors before the end of February. But those are limited spaces, obviously, because of your safety and fire codes. We're limited to ten. So with only ten, those fill up almost immediately. Um, with last year's, I believe, the booth spaces filled up for the October event by about the end of September. So it just, it, it. So it just, it depends.
But they're not all taken? I mean, there's still, if you want, there's still some available?
There typically is maybe one or two. But there's no way that we could ever really predict how it's going to go.
Okay, thank you.
Because there's also, one of the things, and we've been really, really fortunate, I don't know if anybody's noticed, we haven't had any rain cancellations lately. I probably just screwed us off. But when we do have rain cancellations, or when people do cancel, they do have the option of rolling something over. So where one day we might not have, or we might have some vacancies, some vacant booths available, that could change at any moment with somebody saying, hey, I got a surgery coming up. I've already paid for August. Can you roll me over to September? And then all of a sudden, now September's full, where perhaps it wasn't like the week prior, so.
Councilmember Jackson, City Attorney, I think, whenever the First Amendment, we understand a little bit more about the procedures. Are you looking for more council comments? Because if so, thank you.
I think, personally, I think, you know, having a percentage of booths that are open later sounds like a good solution. Because I, personally, I don't want to take anyone's First Amendment rights away if it's a group that's not someone's favorite even. So to me, that seems like it would be a viable alternative as far as accommodating, or giving a better ability to accommodate that, knowing how popular it's going to be. And, you know, when we get further along in the Civic Club process, that may not be as much of a situation because we may have more available booths. But I think that looking at it now, so that we don't have any perceived perception that is not, you know, a good thing for the city, that we should look and see how we can handle it. And that seems like a viable alternative. We definitely want to do it, you know, in a legal manner.
I think, we know the qualified candidates. We know high years, whereas, yeah, 20, we've seen six and seven candidate years. And so reserving that on the high, and obviously, no candidates or one, would not even be, so minimum of two, I think, would be per seat. So I think, knowing it would come down to capacity. And if we can, it feels like, when these things happen, well, can't you just add on, right? And we're trying to get out in front of it and plan for it. But I did like the idea of giving staff the ability to know early, you know, once you qualify to run, hey, we have these Friday Fest booths. You need to let us know by this date if you're going to reserve, so we can plan. And maybe we can make it a part of the qualifying packet.
And as Molly said, she had some last time that booked as late as the end of September. Well, if we put a date that's, you know, in August on that, along with their qualifying package, then that way, it will free it up if someone doesn't want to do that as quickly as possible so that it doesn't inconvenience you. Would that be, I would think that would be better, Molly, than waiting till the last minute, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Why can't we just have it as an insert into the qualifying packet as these things are available? And it's up to the candidate to take responsibility for applying and paying and being there. I know this past election, I reserved a booth on September 7 for October. And then I tried to reserve a booth for November at the 1st of October, and it was full. And I was just told, sorry, you know, you're on a waiting list. And I think that Molly made some adjustments and got both of us in, in November. I don't, I don't know what those adjustments were, but it did, it did cost me $42.80 for adjustment.
In your afternoon, right?
Well, but, you know, it was my fault. I didn't, I didn't apply early enough. That's the reason, reason I didn't have a booth in, in November, or up until that point, didn't have a booth. So I think you just have to put it back on the candidate. Do what you're supposed to do. And, you know, if we have seven candidates running, they all know it, when they qualify, that there's this possibility. And we've had elections where you very well know that they don't reserve a booth. They just drive around in a convertible and waving a sign at everybody. So, you know, I think, I think we just need to put it back on the candidate to do what they need to do.
I agree, because if you're trying to reserve, are you saying, okay, we're going to keep 10 spots open? But if that candidate doesn't get in, we're, well, we're going to reserve it for them. That's defeating the purpose. That's how I, that's how I'm understanding this. We want to reserve, excuse me, we don't want to open up all spots. We want to keep some open, but then we want to keep some open so that candidates can get in. You know, that's, again, going against, we're prejudicing people. Am I misinterpreting? Because I'm taking, like, we're going to keep everything open, but we're going to make sure the candidates get in, those 10 spots that are left. That's how I interpret it.
Yeah, no, that's not what I said. I mean, I.
Oh, I know, you didn't.
Yeah, so you, the city can't, you know, provide any preference. If you're going to open this up to protected activities, the city can't constitutionally have this preferences based on distinctions of speech, okay? A candidate running for any office, right, political speech. But the way, I believe, the Constitution functions, if some very offensive organization that wanted to engage in protected speech and have a vendor booth, then they are, they would be just as eligible as a candidate that wants to express political speech the way the, the way this is opened up.
And.
So that, my point is, if you want to just generally keep, this is just an example, fourth, fourth quarter of Friday Fest events, if you reserve five booths and not open them up on a first-come, first-served on September 1, the first day, right, of the fourth quarter, then everyone has a fair opportunity to get in, but you can't submit an application till September 1.
No, I understand that, and I agree with that. What I'm saying is, how I'm interpreting this is, okay, we're going to save so many spots for, till the end, you know, and then, you know, but as a candidate, they're expecting to get in. Where they can't, that's my point, you can't expect. So what happens if the candidate fails to meet the deadline again? And those 10, when those 10 spots are open, they can't cry wolf. I mean, they, you know, just like the first time. If you don't meet the deadline, you don't meet the deadline. No matter who we are, I mean, I've had a booth there, you know, just selling stuff or whatever. So if you don't meet the deadline, you don't meet the deadline. And you can't expect, because they're reserving spots, that it's going to be saved for a candidate. It's going to be open to everybody. And again, if you miss that deadline, then you miss the deadline.
Deadline is the deadline.
So I think we should keep it as is and put it on the candidate. And not expect that, because they're not going to open everything up, that there's going to be an opening at the end.
But one of the issues that, based on my conversations over the last couple of weeks, is, like I, like I mentioned at the beginning, if it's new business coming to town in August of the, of the current year, or candidate that qualifies in August, or the Florida Supreme Court approves a ballot measure, you know, late, you know, late in, in the summer to get on, or like to get on the ballot, you have a first-come, first-served policy when, on those 35 vendor booths that open up January 1. So if you, you know, later, you don't, you don't know till later that you may even have a need for a vendor booth for legitimate reasons, you know, you could be shut out for the, for the, for the current year. And of course, you know, when you're dealing with referendum questions and candidates running for office, the decision's made in November, right? A booth the next year isn't going to matter much, right? Unless you win an election and, you know, you want to just have one as an elected official, or like you know, right? So, I mean, that was, that was my point. If you're going to, you know, reserve some for, you know, the latecomers.
And the candidate would still be responsible. They would be, something could be inserted in their candidate package that says, if you want a booth, you need to apply immediately for your Friday Fest food. Booth, if they don't do it, and they don't get in, then it's on them. They've been notified, they had an opportunity to actually have a booth. But if a booth is booked six months in advance, and that candidate doesn't even know they're running till August, they'll never have an opportunity to get out in front of the people, the voters in Cape Canaveral.
I, I don't have an issue with, you know, reserving booths till later. I just, you know, that if you don't, you don't do it, then it's on your, you know, yourself that you didn't qualify to do it. And no rights are violated, your First Amendment rights or whatever rights were not violated because you didn't apply in time.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
And that's what I'm saying, is that if you reserve, you know, five, it's first-come, first-served, and a candidate running for council has to compete with anyone else that may be wanting, wanting, wanting one of those eligible booths. So it's on the, it's on the applicant to meet the application deadline and get in.
And I, I don't know that the board has any responsibility other than setting, you know, you're not responsible for violating anybody's rights or affecting the elections or any of that kind of stuff. The board is not, so.
But that's what my entire premise was around, though, Councilmember Davis, is the perception. And it literally says in the Constitution that public trusts were not supposed to have the perception of any of that at all. So what attorney, our city attorney is recommending, same thing. You'd be responsible for it, but would hold some back. Because if you're a candidate and you hadn't decided to run after, until after January 1 that year, and you don't get a booth, it can be perceived. And it's perception I'm talking about. So that's the whole premise of that, but I agree with you.
And I understand what you're saying, and I agree for keeping some open. But you stated the other day that it was, it affected the elections, and it violated your amendment rights. It didn't violate your amendment rights, you didn't apply in time.
No, I did not say that. Please go back and listen to that meeting. I said there was a perception that that occurred. And I don't want that perception occurring within our city. It was not even me. I've spoken to the city manager over it multiple times. It was a constituent, one of the voters that felt that. They spoke to city manager at his coffee with the city manager. So I am saying, if there's a perception, my duty as a public servant is to ensure that that is addressed. That's what I'm doing with this. So we agree on how to handle it, and that's a great thing. But at no point did I say that it was a breach of my rights. I said there was a perception that that was the case. And we want to make sure that we don't have that as a city. It's a negative thing. And it even says so in our Constitution and Florida League of Cities training.
I'm not going to go arguing with you about that, because I know social media.
I, I just, I think that what Anthony's recommending, holding some back and putting the insert in the candidate's packet and be done with it. And, you know, that would solve the problem. I think that's what we should do, get a consensus on that, because it's getting late.
Yeah, we need to move, we've lost, we're doing about an hour per, per item since the return. And so let's try to wrap this up.
I would like to make a motion that we take our city attorney's advice, hold back a percentage of booths as recommended by city manager for availability later in the year. And an agenda, or a packet item be added so that candidates are aware they need to immediately secure their product, their Friday Fest booth.
Do we need a motion or a discussion item?
We, we are, we can make a motion to take action.
See, the way, all right, so, I mean, the policy, as it's written in the application, has been, you know, administratively created. So, I mean, if that's the consensus, based on this discussion, then I can work with staff to make the modifications, to help them make the modification to the application to address, you know, the consensus that you all appear to have reached about reserving some of the vendor booths for, you know, later, later in the year.
Mayor, may I add something to the conversation?
Please.
Friday Fest is only one of the opportunities that you, as candidates, have the, anybody has the opportunity to engage in. The other items that tend to come up within that election earring type of window is National Night Out, which is hosted by the sheriff's office. We only provide support, we roll out the speakers in the stage, and, you know, that's about it for that, so you'd have to reach out to them to, to participate in that event. But we also have our trunk or treat, which a lot of candidates have participated in in the past. And part of the handout that we've discussed internally will include not only the Friday Fest opportunities, but the other outreach opportunities as well. And then beyond that, there's two, what I call natural breaks in our Friday Fest operations. There's a stop in January, and then there's a stop in July. Typically, when we decide to make any changes to the rules, the processes, how we get people in, what route we tell the food vendors to turn on, what route we tell the retail vendors, where we tell them to park, we tend to make those, we have those conversations, you know, leading up to the December event. We work on whatever we need to do administratively, or, you know, our verbiage for our regular emails that go out. If you've participated in our events, you've seen the emails from Marcy telling you where to turn, where to park, what time to get there, and how long you're expected to stay. Those changes typically take effect starting in January. So since we've already opened up the, the booth spaces for this year, a consideration of this board might be to try to utilize one of those natural breaks, because the next natural break is July. But if you set, say, just pick arbitrary number, 25%, reserve 25% for later release, we might not have that left over in this current year, right now. So just something to consider. January is typically, in the past, when we've made, like, larger changes, which, those are minimal, but it's a nice break. And it's an opportunity for us to say, hey, vendors, time to update your information if things have changed. And then they are requested to fill out an updated application. So just things to consider.
Thank you.
Any opposed from what our city attorney recommended as far as this? I think we have consensus.
Mia, are you clear on the consensus?
I would like clarification on the consensus, please, from the city attorney.
I mean, the consensus.
There's no need to make a motion and vote. You interjected and said, this is.
Well, it's a discussion item, it's an administrative policy. As long as it remains administrative, then you can, through this discussion, give a consensus for staff to amend the administrative policy. The consensus, as I understand it, is twofold. And that is, one, there would be, I would work with staff to amend the application to, and to address reserving a certain number of booths for later in the year. And make them, the opportunity to reserve those booths, it would, would occur later in the year. The other, the other component to this is, in the candidate qualifying package, which the clerk serves as the qualifying officer, she will provide an insert about these outreach opportunities, including Friday Fest. So at least candidates are aware that they exist. And if a candidate decides on their own volition that they want to take, try to take advantage of them, it's on them to, to meet the city's, you know, policies, right? And then with respect to Friday Fest, that would be first-come, first-served. And there will be some reserved booths. And I can work with Molly. And I can work with Molly, um, you know, I know there's a couple of stop times here. Um, we can, we can talk about the schedule and how to implement this, this consensus. Does that?
That's great.
Does that sum up the twofold consensus?
Reserved just for general purposes, not specified purposes.
They're reserved for vendors later, later in the year. They'll open up for the, for vendors as stated in the, in the application, which, which includes.
As long in that effort that you can prove that, cause it, the problem happens when a, when one candidate gets in and the other one can't. And as long as we can go, let me explain to you why and it makes sense and it's fair. And it might be, you know, just improving the way we communicate the existing process. But I would say that would be the scenario that I think would give us all comfort is when we tell someone, no, it's not, there's no debate. And I think we have timestamps on submissions and things like we were saying. That's, that's it, I have to say. We good? We need to move. Um, we are at nine fifty-one. I wanna, before we dive into the next item, um, uh, which is item number six, um, Councilmember Willis's item. And then we have EV reports as item seven and then eight, permitting hardship. Um, we will need, let's, let's go ahead if, if we intend to get through these. And, and give me, if you don't mind, estimated time?
It will take two minutes for me to do mine.
Well, that, we can just proceed with that right away. I think that makes sense. Let's, sir, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, after submitting this item for discussion, my goal was to have the city manager direct staff to advertise a lot of our efforts, uh, environmental efforts for the city, um, and our resiliency efforts to other municipalities to better understand their best practices and let them know what we are doing here in the city of Cape Canaveral and create, um, a network if we could. Because we can do all the, just start, discharging clean water into the Banana River is all day long. And if nobody else is helping, it's still dirty. But since submitting this discussion item, uh, Zach I. Colts has gotten in touch with me, gave me some information. They've already started this and I was unaware of it. So they've already included the City of Melbourne, Cocoa Beach, Indian Harbor Beach, and, uh, Maridale and Redevelopment Agency and the Florida Fish and Wildlife. They're communicating. So Zach is going to be expanding that network. So we're, they are achieving, the Resiliency Department is achieving what I'm asking for.
That's great.
That's all I've got.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from the council on this item? Item number seven, uh, we are at nine fifty-three. Councilmember Jackson, these final two are yours. I, I don't wanna be right up till ten. Do you have an estimate on how much time you think you'll need for these?
Just go as fast as possible, can this, is, uh, Mr. Dela, I was gonna.
Um, I believe John's still here, um, Dave or Lexi, can you check?
Okay, so, um, there, I gave council a handout. There's a lot of market indicators that are pointing downward. We have layoffs. We, Tesla is even laid off. We have quite a, quite a bit of things going on as transitions from the QEVs to hybrids have occurred and is occurring. So I wanted to give you that for some information. You'll see that Zach, once again, reminded us with the reports in here. Um, John, do you possibly have the total of the number on the, numbers on the charges for me?
No.
Ten dollars?
It was around sixteen hundred dollars.
It was eleven fifty for the, for February, from December thirty to February twelve, it was.
Only like eleven hundred bucks.
But to the end of March.
I don't think, did, I don't know.
Yeah, it went from, it went from December fifth all the way to three thirty-one and that was about sixteen hundred dollars.
Oh, that was sixteen hundred more, okay.
The Q one was about eleven hundred from January to March, or twelve, yep.
And the estimate for what we would be looking at as far as a target on the charging was around seventy-two thousand dollars. We are going to be off on that, in my opinion, but I could be wrong, I hope you're wrong. Um, and the reason I say that is we just had our busiest period of the year. So I think we need to, and I know that, um, Mr. Dela is gonna look at providing more information for us and the net present value and things like that. He's gonna tell you something in just a minute. Um, but, uh, just to let you know, we, that was our busiest period of the year. Snowbirds were in and that's what we were looking like, looking at on what we brought in on our charges. So we're gonna be off target for what our, our projected budget, or projection was on. Now, do you wanna talk about the, um, net present value?
Sure. And that, there's a lot of analytical stuff involved there. So what I did is I do, went to a analytical element and, um, they had answered me. And, uh, uh, if you wanted to, uh, go ahead and get that service so they could, they would go ahead and put all these elements and variables in to this, uh, net present value spreadsheet. And they're, the things that they do, it's what they do as an expert, you know, almost like actuaries do stuff. This is what these people do. And, uh, then, uh, they would charge us, uh, between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars. And it would have all the elements in there we need. And then that could actually be reused for the future for something else by using their models and then inserting information in there. And whenever you would need their assistance, uh, of course, they could charge you a fee for, if you have additional questions. I don't know what other things like EV chargers would come in the future. But if there's things you wanted to measure, then it might contain more elements than just the things you see in those reports and the things that they incorporate in, the discount rate, the break even rate and all that stuff. So, um, yeah, if it's, if the council thinks it's worthwhile to pursue this, then, um, we would go ahead and tell these folks that this is something, uh, we would like to have. It is early in the ballgame. I do agree with Councilmember Jackson that to, uh, try to pin down numbers after the busy season now, I don't even know how you do that. I know Zach has put a lot of things together. And, and, um, Zach's not here and I'm not, I, I will say this and I'll speak in his, uh, in his, in his stead. Uh, he did provide the seventy-two thousand dollars for the budget. Um, but of course, when he was doing that, he had, he had to deal with the information that was available at the time, all the elements that affected, what could drive that number. So he actually did, I thought, a very good analysis in what he had to get to that number now. And, um, Councilmember Jackson was in my office with Zach. And I will tell you that to achieve seventy-two thousand dollars, are we talking about by September thirtieth? Because that's what's in the budget, right? I don't, I don't even see how you do that. But I don't know what's gonna happen in the next so many months. But I don't even see how you could achieve that. And we had no history to go on there. But we do know this though. We do know this. We have an investment here. I think it says that we spent a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, you know, to get this stuff set up with the, these EV chargers and what have you. So potentially, and I don't even know, and we talked about this, Councilmember Jackson, I don't even know. But if there's a break even point and, and maybe things will really escalate. But let's just say three and a half years, break even point. Um, for the taxpayer, it still would have been worth it because you would have retrieved back the dollars you put in, established a program. And then as long as electric vehicles stay popular and in the future and whatever, I can't predict that in the next four years. But if it does, then we're gonna continue to make money then. Uh, in, in other words, it'll be a revenue stream. I think, I.
Do we know?
We gotta, we're at ten, I think, we're at a ten.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all I got.
One, one more question. Do we know the, the cost for the electricity for them?
Um, I would have to get with Zach. He did all the, the reports and stuff, I don't know.
We didn't hit everything we needed for the report, so I'll work with them on that.
Okay.
And the next one's mine, agenda item as well, that's just a discussion agenda.
Well, instead of us to, to rush you through, it's ten o'clock. So what I'd like to do is give ourselves some time. We need the time and I need to address in reports what I, what I was talking about. And if you have to go, uh, you can go, I understand. But let's, let's entertain a motion. I would ask for thirty minutes, uh, if, and we can be done in fifteen if, if that happens, but I, I, I don't think.
I'll make a motion to extend for thirty minutes.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, uh, second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to extend to ten thirty for thirty minutes. Any other discussion on that?
I have one other thing I wanted to add and that is the state of New Jersey is now adding a, a very broad tax on EVs. Um, EV owners are gonna be paying two hundred and fifty dollar road fee tax due to the road pollution as well as, um, the total taxes that are gonna be added to any new vehicle purchase is one thousand sixty. So states and cities are looking at ways to, uh, combat road pollution and the weight of vehicles on the roadways, just so everyone knows. So those are things that are happening within the industry.
And that was on the last item?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote this motion through for the extension. We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you all. Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Davis?
I know, I was just gonna ask, you're, how, how long do you think your report is going to go?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I would say I, uh, my goal would be as much of the thirty minutes as possible.
And this next one is mine?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is the final discussion item number eight.
Yes. And this item number I added to the agenda because we have condo associations, uh, within the state of Florida and in our area that are having problems with insurance, um, increases that are just going off of the charts. Because when they go to recoup, recode a roof, it is not a permitted process. And the insurance companies are using that as, um, reason to go up. And the increases have been from three to five hundred percent on increases for condo associations. So, yeah, it's not a good thing. I've talked with, um, our city manager in regards to this because I was, I had a hope that we would be able to add that pro, permitting process to the city's permitting so that this would give the condo associations the ability to have that a permitted process, which they could then provide to the insurance company. The insurance companies are literally looking at this like they never touched their roof, even though they may have a fifteen-year or twenty-year warranty on the coating itself. Um, and then Todd was giving me some information. Todd, do you wanna talk, speak to the building?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would also ask Dave, Dave has prepared a document that he can distribute to council while he's bringing it up and distributed. I can talk about that.
That's great.
Um, I'm reading from an email from, uh, that I sent to Councilmember Jackson on Wednesday, April tenth of this week. I said, "Hi, Kay, I had the opportunity to briefly discuss your agenda item with both Anthony and Dave Dickey. I meant, I mentioned that you had previously explained that your item related to some recent activity regarding the insurance industry and the application of roof coatings. At my request, Dave requested a point of clarification on permitting for roof coatings from our building official to gather accurate information from the Florida Building Code perspective." And that's the document that Dave's handing out. The question is, is a permit an inspection required for roof coatings? The answer is, if it's a coating over existing, no. But if it's a liquid applied roofing, then yes. It's been a few years since I was a building official and the code changes over the years. So I copied Mike German to correct me if I got this wrong and he didn't. Thank you, Dave. The Florida Building Code refers to a roof structure as the structural portion of a roof. This could be concrete, it could be a wood truss system with plywood, it's the structural part of the roof. Then the Florida Building Code refers to a roof covering separately. This is the waterproofing membrane. Depending on the application, this could be asphalt shingles, it could be sheets of bituminous roofing, many types of synthetic rubber roofing, et cetera. Think of it as the waterproofing part of the roof. I've heard of fabric reinforced liquid applied systems that can be reportedly serve as primary roof membrane, but I have no experience with them. I know that the age of the roof covering definitely impacts homeowner's insurance and perhaps this is what you were looking into. Uh, there are coating products that are intended to extend the life of a roof covering. But at least in the eyes of the Florida Building Code, that's not the same as a new roof covering. So I asked Mike to please let me know if I got anything that wrong and he didn't. I hope this helps.
So I think adding this to the city's page is definitely going to help because that'll help associations make a intelligent decision when they're looking at their roofing. Um, the thing that I wanted to state, um, were you going to try to get the permitting for this added through the building, the state building division, code division?
If, if the council wishes to direct staff to do that or you, or ask you to work with staff, um, what Mrs. Jackson's referring to is the Florida Building Code has a general prohibition that a city cannot adopt a local technical amendment to the building code, which is more stringent or less stringent than the Florida Building Code. You may not do it. However, you may submit to the Florida Building Commission for approval of a local technical amendment. And if approved, they will make it code throughout the whole state. So, and what Councilmember Jackson is referring to is if we requested a local technical amendment to require that the Florida Building Code be amended to say that roof coatings require a permit and inspection, that might help solve this.
Yes, because they have a very big gap for these condo associations that have used recoding. And it is creating a huge increase in their insurance policies for them. And in some cases, half of their annual budget. I've talked to people, to complexes, that it's been half their annual budget for their increase in insurance. So I was looking for any kind of relief that we may be able to work with them and get for them. And if we had the ability to add that technical amendment, it may assist some of our condo associations here in the city. And with insurance increases as well as SBD four, which is causing a lot of condo associations to have to put out big money for their SERGE reports that are due, this could assist with that.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Or Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, could we, could we make an amendment for scarification?
For, I'm sorry, for what?
Scarification of the roof. In other words, you're taking off certain layers. For instance, our, our condominium has the flat roof. And we have, um, a silicone treatment on it over top of, um, the, um, soundproofing. And then we have the, the seal over the concrete. And if we take it down to the, uh, soundproofing and just reapply it and the SPF coating on top of that, the insurance companies are giving us a break on. Now, they, I think they would be happier if we were, had some sort of permitting for that, where you're not taking the entire roof off. So that kinda helps with the SERGE issues. But it, the insurance company considers that a new roof at that point. Or at least the insurance company that we are dealing with, with our condominium complex. So my question is, if you look up scarification, it'll tell you, you're just taking off certain layers. If we could do, if we could permit that or apply to have that change?
So that would be two requests for two local technical amendments. One is just adding liquid coating. The other one is this new verb I'm hearing for the first time, scarification.
Yeah. Okay. If, I mean, if we can't get it with one, you, you know, try the other. And I mean, which is a more severe step. But it does reduce the cost of re-roofing these buildings to satisfy the, the SERGEs, which is the Structural Integrity Reserve Study. which is required of all the condominiums.
So Mayor, I think councilmember Jackson is asking about consensus from the council that she can work with staff to develop a request for local technical amendments as described here tonight.
Including the roof recoating and the scarification. Thank you for adding that in. I think that's great.
I don't, you know, hopefully just recoating, you know, requiring a permit is critical for the insurance companies.
Can you repeat what you said, Todd?
I believe councilmember Jackson is requesting council consensus that she work with staff to develop a request for a local technical amendment from the Florida Building Code for adding scarification and/or recoating to the permitting requirements of the Florida Building Code.
That you would be doing to Tallahassee?
It would be a request made to Tallahassee. It doesn't guarantee success. We don't know unless we ask.
Just to advise the council, can't recall all the technical details, but there is a statutory adoption process that would have to be complied with in order to even propose and adopt this technical amendment. So just to mention that, so there is a process and a procedure that I would be happy to work with staff on if that's the consensus of council.
Well, I'm paying too much in condo fees, so let's, let's do that.
It is, it is making big time difficulties for our residents in the city that are in condos.
Which is a big part of our city and.
And so in order to provide the services to our city that when these things occur, I'm with Mr. Willis. I'm with councilmember Willis.
Well, I think, I think we're gonna start seeing foreclosures on condominiums before too much longer.
And there's already people putting them on the market.
We just had an assessment of my condo. I just had to pay over $5,000 for a roof.
Your portion?
My portion.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, and things that are happening with the SIRS report are resulting in $50,000 assessments for some condo complexes within Florida. And that's not even including insurance. So, you know, it's all over the board as far as what is required from those Structural Integrity Reports and their milestone inspections. And so in any way that we can assist our owners here in this area, I think that it's a good thing for us to do that. I've been hit too, Kim, and it's not gritty, was it?
No.
It is.
Hurt the pocket.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I think, City Manager, you have clarity on the consensus from this item?
I do, and the consensus would be for councilmember Jackson to work with Anthony and staff towards developing the request for a local technical amendment, as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, I do have two, and I overlooked one, comment card. It was for item number five. I certainly received the card. Shannon Roberts, who I think, did she leave? Oh, my gosh, there you are. Yes, and as you're coming forward, I also have one from Peg Schaller. If you don't mind, I need to actually grab something out of my office that I was up here fumbling for, that I think will expedite my item. As you're speaking, I am gonna step out, Mayor Pro Tim. Thank you.
I just wanted to applaud the council for addressing this issue. I guess as a resident, I was observing the opportunities or lack thereof in the last election for the candidates that were running. And I felt, given the service to the city and the voters in our city, I think it's critically important that the candidates for the council, mayor, whatever, be afforded an opportunity, at Friday Fest in particular, to have an opportunity to be there and have a chance to reach out to the voters. I was gonna ask if the packet would include the three months, you know, if they're qualifying in August, that it would include an opportunity to advance reserve for the months of September, October, and November, only if, if that November Friday Fest is before the election day. I don't know what that would be. But I just really believe it's so important to our city as a service to our voters to have an opportunity for these candidates. And I know Mia, we go over the interview with the candidates to have a chance to be at the Friday Fest. And the advance pay, I would recommend for three months if they so choose. And maybe there's a special location in the Friday Fest location that the city staff could put aside for the council candidates, and that wouldn't preclude any interference with the other booths. I don't know whether that would be possible or not, but maybe have a particular area where that could be a service that the city would be offering to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Peg, did you want to speak now? Or when Wes gets back? Okay. All right, no problem. So we're just waiting on Wes.
Mayor Pro Tim, if there's interest, you could call for a short recess if anybody needed a biological break?
Yes, if we want to take a five-minute break? No?
Dr. Roberts, can I apologize for stepping out? Ms. Schaller, did you want to speak? Okay, I have your public comment card. And it is the item I brought up at the end of the agenda that we are at the report section of the meeting. The, the special meeting update from the January 28th, or 24th special meeting that was held was to address issues of community development, department roles, responsibilities, and discuss actions proposed to resolve current issues for properties located at Fillmore and Jackson Avenue. That meeting concluded with consensus on action items. I proposed about 12, and from the minutes, we ended up approving, I believe it was at the, was it the February meeting, the very next meeting? Or was it March? We approved the minutes.
There was an update item on the March council meeting.
So February, we didn't address anything at that time.
I believe so.
January 24th, February, March, it was put on as a informational item, which included the minutes, if I understand. And it also included a table that outlined, basically broke those action items that we supported 5-0 down and provided status update. And in that meeting, I did my best to express that I think that should have been a discussion item, something that we should have discussed. It shouldn't have been put on an informational item, especially going through February. And the reason I said that was that not only was it, I think, supported due to the issues that were raising concerns and the testimony we heard from the public and the longstanding nature of these, but most importantly, to the, to the big picture of Cape Canaveral. And that's why the agenda item was more about code enforcement and community development as a whole. And so, so had that not happened, we still, we would have had the update. But I think in there, we discovered issues with the response as an information-only item. And since then, we are now in the April meeting. And I want to express again, I think this should have been on the agenda. So I'm not going to give it the time. I think it 100% deserves a day. But I do want to use reports as an opportunity to say, I don't know how much the council's been involved with the work of our city administration and team, but I certainly have been involved. And I appreciate the, some of the things that we've done since then by creating for Fillmore a task list. We've also accomplished some things since that meeting by receiving the final version of the engineering study. And we can, and there has been meetings with contractors, which I had the opportunity to sit in on, and communication with staff members, David, Lexi, Todd, and our engineers. And tonight, we had a presentation from Kim Lee Horn, the very engineers that did the Fillmore study. And for me, I would have much, appreciated much more in update, a presentation from the engineering report from them. That's, that's my position. And why? Because it is more important at this stage. And the reason why is since then, from my observations, from my meetings with our city manager, and from my communication with the public and the parties affected here, things have not, the items, I do not believe any of them are what we would say are complete yet. Now, I know some of them will take longer on the back end. But if we go through and we read the informational item, we found issues in there. And my, this is why it's urgent. We are the local government. This is Fillmore building official side permitting. On the Jackson Avenue, it's code enforcement side. What I've learned, and I want to share this with the council, because it's important. And I firmly believe that if we do not talk about this at every meeting and set an expectation that we want to, as long as this council wants to talk about it, I think we should have it at every meeting. But the data that was provided to us is not complete, number one. And what was provided, there are issues of serious accuracy in there. Further, the BSNA on the code enforcement side, what I've learned is when we go in there, we really cannot trust that data. That data is titled, and it was brought to my attention after I had a meeting today, literally as public records on the top of BSNA. It says "public records" on the portal. And so when the public sees that side of it, that's it. And when you go in and you look at the attachments and the correspondence that was happening, it does not tell the public all the information. And I'm not talking about every little photo and piece of evidence. I'm talking about the basic steps of our code development decision tree process, the notice of violations that were sent. I cannot lean on those and trust that data today. And that's an issue. And that's an issue that our city manager, I think, has communicated and knows about. But we all need to know so that when I say, hey, we need to talk about this again, what we've been provided actually made me raise the urgency higher. Because specifically, when I go back through, and I will address first my desire to recommend and propose that getting the parties who can answer these questions, some of them I listed, and I did say I would move forward or consider moving forward a meeting. Our city manager did reach out when I talked about contractors, city engineers, building officials, so that we can understand this. I did not take action on that. I do regret not taking action on that, and I take full responsibility. But I think we need to take that next step with, starting with the city engineers presenting their report. I understand that city staff is intervening, providing an executive summary. But we requested the engineers to provide the city council a report. And I think as staff hopefully does get that finished, that has been ready for a week or two now. And that, I'm ready to receive that presentation because the recommendations that I'm seeing in there are validating some of the other concerns that had been brought to our attention the entire time. And so this, this needs time and energy with the hope of not only fixing the issues there, but overall. And the issues around, and where I'm seeing this headed is that the city doesn't have, there's some, a few ways they can go, but I don't see how we have a position of leverage that's sufficient. And the developers, the contractor that was involved, has not given me the confidence that they understand the issue. And so I'd like to get the councils weighed in on the engineering report and the steps that needs to be taken. The next issue is our communication on Fillmore. Believe David, Mr. Dickey said last time that he contacted the property owners weekly. That was an expectation, I think, communicated by our city manager. And when I go back through, and I, and I, I have not been provided any correspondence that would show that to be true. And so, and I think it was stated that, do you want me to send you the emails? I will. I shouldn't have to keep asking for them. I, I would like to see that. And the reason why isn't just a random question. It's because the property owners were quick to let me know when they didn't hear back. And so I would chime in immediately in the first couple of years and send it to our city manager and say, hey, what's going on here? And then it would trickle down, and will you follow up? Then they would follow up, and then it would fizzle. And again, under this circumstance and the severity that I did my best to communicate, this should have not slipped through the cracks. And so why are we saying that we're doing weekly communication and it's not happening? And then with all the importance around removing this FPL poll, which is a separate issue from the big ones, the property owner of where the poll was located should have been one of the first calls as soon as we were made aware of it. And that property owner was not notified, from my understanding. And we were given the expectation that they would be. They were told that we will give you updates even if we don't have an update. The poll was removed, thank you, our city manager provided it. And my questions, which I didn't copy all, was, did we let them know? And they were informed after I sent that email. However, other property owners, who the property it's not located on, were not notified. And so while that might seem small, under these circumstances, it's an issue for me and for our ability to clean up this problem. On the Jackson Avenue side, statements were made and written and provided in that meeting. The documents didn't exist prior to 2022. I don't know if we're aware of this. That is not true. That is what was provided to us. And I do not understand why that statement was written and made when the meeting prior, that the magistrate, they were literally presenting evidence. There's public records that would show that activity was happening prior to that date. And today, we can go into the public records folder that I assume our city clerk responded to back in 2017, 18. And we can see records that have been there and existed. Yet, when we get a 5-0 consensus support to say provided, it's provided in March as an informational item. And it stated, we basically have to 2022. There's longstanding issues, well-documented issues with that property on code enforcement, on the issues around the maintenance of that property. And I found that these hearings were called with the code enforcement board in 1819, and then they just fizzled, and there was no follow-up done. And so since then, and. And so since then, instead of me feeling more confident about resolving this, my confidence has lowered. Do I still believe? Absolutely. But I don't think it's going to happen when we don't talk about it. And a few of my notes here, just to help drive home some of the issues, was first, if we can find a date in the next, I would meet Friday. I would meet early next week. In my opinion, it would be my request that we try to meet early next week. And I do believe we need to allocate a minimum of two to three hours per property for Jackson and for Fillmore. And we can break them up. But it's a half day if we get through it, minimum in my opinion. But I'm looking at what we accomplish when we come out of this. And the process is not understood today. I had a meeting today. We were presented with a decision tree. When I followed that process, when I look at state law, those questions about where did we fall down? I want to know where the problems are. And today, I think we're in a position where we're now going to change our process. And so it's really important that I think this council hears and understands. I assume we would want to know what process they followed. Today, it's very hard to understand that. And we cannot rely on BSNA as a reliable source. There is no reliable source since January that we can rely on in what's happening. The there were facts about, or statements, excuse me, that, well, one more thing on the 2022. Did we really not know that those documents existed prior to 2022? We have the same code enforcement officers on the same property. And the concern there is that it was, what was the process that was followed to go find those records? And why wasn't it provided when it's literally four lines in a straight line of management? Where code enforcement officer has a seat, who was assigned to the case, has a senior code enforcement officer to overlook them, who has a community development director to overlook them, who has a city manager, and we have a city attorney involved in this. And why is the council the ones that are having to step in and catch glaring issues that are seriously? I haven't had heard a good answer that I feel confident in. And so the the statements about compliance in the field was achieved. And the process that we followed to address life safety issues, I do not understand. That when we go and you, first, if we could rely on BSNA, we could, that was the goal, we could see what happened. But it's pretty clear that there's records that there was an issue longstanding with this property. A new property owner comes into Jackson Avenue, invests in that property, gets permits, requested all the historical issues. She sees that there's cases and issues. Then she brings her property in compliance. And then when she inquires about the properties around here, they were said that compliance was in the field. And there's no documentation that I think that shows that or proves that. And so what happens? The property owner, days, weeks after, gets a notice of violation for issues that are not major life safety issues. When we go back to the old cases in 1718, those notice of violations that never were resolved, from what I see, talked about working towards the owners making progress. But those would have required permits. And I can't see where those permits were complete. And in that notice of violation, it says fire hazard, fire hazard, fire hazard throughout that entire thing. Our code enforcement officers created that document. And then when the complaints come in, it's not enough. Fire number one happened. Fire number two happened. And today, it was not until November of 2023, which wasn't that long ago, until this property now basically goes back on the clock. And it is not, nothing makes sense to me on how we do not have clear knowledge of that with the same officers on the same time. And it's late. My brain's jumbled. I've got my list of questions that I don't want to work through and walk away more frustrated because I can't rely on it. I want to bring this to a head and understand what our process was and address these inconsistencies. On what is being presented to this council to make good decisions is not reliable. And we're making major decisions for this community. And after that moment, after we really said, no, let's fix this one, I have no confidence that all the other properties are going to be in manner. If this is at April 16th, we still today do not have just one case, one property that we can lean on. There's shared drives. There's things like red folders that I've learned about. There's issues around using BSA one way. Will you do it this way? And then when I talk to the code enforcement officer, they say, well, I don't use it that way. And it's two people. That's an issue. We can fix it. But I do not think not putting it on the agenda is the way to fix it. And the basics on notifying the property owner at Fillmore, the day of, I know the answer I got was that it was sprung on, is, does not make any sense to me. And the contractors and their understanding and the approach we're taking based on an engineering report, this council has not even been presented yet, I think, is a step that goes outside the scope of what we want. I'd like to receive the presentation by the end of this week, early next week, and work through a couple of hours per property, these questions. And that's where I am. I've got more because the list keeps stacking, but I know it's late. And I'm not seeing in the notes where things are happening. And the last thing I'll say on Jackson is that documents have been said that they're public record, according to our BSNA website, that exist in there that I believe today, and I have not seen, can actually verify it actually happened. And then there's documents out in the community that people received that our system cannot and did not prove. And I still think we have lingering ones. And it took a long time just to get to today. Hours before the meeting, they started to become uploaded. Talk about perception. I could continue to talk about this with the door shut. But I know the pulse of Cape Canaveral. We're imperfect people trying to do the best we can. This has crossed way too far. And I am here now, once again, saying, if there are any other items that are getting in the way of this, it would be the civic hub and those things that Kim Lee Horn did an excellent job. But if we don't fix this issue, we're in trouble. And so I think it's appropriate to come back together and have a meeting with the parties that we need to understand on Fillmore Avenue and then to address these inconsistencies and inaccuracies. And if that's the case, why did that happen? This is what the report asked for and some recommendations. Because if it happened, what are we seeing different that is going to change? I'm not seeing a timeline that's going to work for me. And so we were asked to have patience. I've had patience. We were asked to have faith. I have faith in all things that I do. I have faith. But what this is, we need facts and we need truth. And I have not seen it. And with the trust in local government going down day by day, this right here is something that I want to talk about in the sunshine openly. And I've heard it's mistakes or oversight. And it doesn't make sense to me. And so thank you for your patience to talk through that.
Can we talk, Mayor?
No, no. I'll finish. And I'm here to talk to the council and I'm here to share this with them.
I'd like to share.
Point of order, you passed the 30 minutes. You know your motion to extend or the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you. I overlooked it. I'm finished. But I want, I wish I would have requested this immediately to be at the front of the agenda. My request today is first, do we want to extend for 10 minutes?
I think we need to hear from Mr. Dickey.
I want to hear from Mr. Dickey.
So I would like to make a motion to extend.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Davis.
To extend.
Motion by Council, a second by Councilmember Jackson. Did you move to extend for 10 minutes?
That's what I said. I didn't say a time, so if I can still, can I say 11 o'clock? That's fine.
Okay. A motion to extend till 11?
I'll second.
Second. By, a motion made by Councilmember Davis, a second by Councilmember Jackson to extend to 11 o'clock. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
I want to hear from David too. But he said, can I talk? I said no, because I want to make sure that I've finished here. And it's late. And I do ask for your patience, but when I can go into BSNA and rely on that information, that's a good first start. That was step one. And I would like to have a meeting to discuss that at a minimum and also work through the engineers at Fillmore. And my hope was the council would be available and willing to meet in the near future. And if I got anything done, it would be to schedule the meeting tonight and try to find a date where we can make it work.
And you had mentioned Friday as well as the following Monday?
Yes.
Either one of those are good for me.
Excuse me, I had my hand.
Okay.
I've heard, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but you are saying that it's late. So in order to keep on moving forward, I would like to hear from Dave Dickey. Then we can decide what dates and stuff. There.
Oh, she does? I thought that you did not.
No, she wanted to wait, so.
I misunderstood that. I'm very, I thought that you rescinded your, okay. So Dave, Peg, I want to make sure the motion is heard. Okay. Peg, do you want to come forward?
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'd like for everybody to know that I have met with Dave Dickey. I have met with Todd Morley. And I do feel like we're moving towards the right path. The things that have, since the January meeting, slowly started to progress, and that's great. But the more information I've received, the more questions that are raised. Primarily, Don Willis asked who receives the notice of violation. He was given the answer. Council was given the answer that the property owner receives the notice of violation and that the tenant is courtesy copied. However, I'm in possession of a document that has me listed as the respondent. And it has the property owner as courtesy copied. Along with that is the certified letter that it came in. So when I asked for those documentations to be sent to me, I was sent a different document, one that had the property owner listed as the respondent. I'm sorry, yeah, listed as a respondent and me CC'd. However, I've never received that copy. So I've had those conversations with them. This is all out in the public. But my thought was, is that council members should be told that they were given inaccurate information. So I, we are working towards it. We will have another meeting. I am happy that we're finally getting some traction. But I just want to make a few statements. From the date that I emailed Todd and Brian and Dave and said the building is not secured was December 5th of 2022. It was 331 days later before the property was asked to secure their building in writing. It was 448 days since we first walked the property until they notice a violation was sent. And it was 522 days from the time I said, we've had a fire. The building's not secured and I need help. Until a simple half-day job of boarding up the stairs were done. 522 days. However, they walked the property in March 2022. And I received the notice of violation March 28th, six days for a non-life-threatening issue. 6:12, they walked the property. I received an additional notice of violation on 6:16, four days. So they were able to do quickly, but 522 days. I'm still want to know what's the process of why that took so long. And I know we're working through it with them.
Member Davis?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Dave, if you'd like to speak, please.
I'm going to make my comments very brief. I'm really disheartened by this conversation this evening. Mayor, do you remember what you told me standing in the stairwell this afternoon? You said you appreciated being heard. You remember saying that to me?
I do.
I appreciate the same thing. And I don't feel like I am being heard. As you know, we've met with you and we are providing responses to all of Peg's concerns that she has raised. We haven't finished the document. As you know, we have not done that yet. But we are preparing ourselves to respond to these issues. I welcome an opportunity to sit down with the council and go through these line by line, word by word, item by item. I'd look forward to that conversation. And I hope the council as a whole can understand and see what we have been doing. And someone earlier today said, I feel like the goalposts are being moved. That's kind of how I feel as well. At last meeting, there was issues and concerns that were brought up. And we've been addressing these. And now this evening, I feel like the sense I'm getting is staff has done nothing, or we've dragged our feet, or we're not taking this serious. Those are all so far from the truth. And so I look forward to the opportunity to sit down with the council and go over these line by line and issue by issue. I think that'll be very telling for all of us. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I'd like to add my perspective too, if I could, Mayor.
Please.
After last March council meeting last month, I spoke with Peg and she and I exchanged. After last March council meeting last month, I spoke with Peg and she and I exchanged cell phone numbers. That led to the next week, we met and had a lunch. At that lunch, she gave me her side of the story. She gave me a packet of information, which for the first time was very specific data about how she felt under code enforcement. And she was able to convince me of how she perceived things. And I see that perception as a problem. I don't want that perception. So I took very good notes of it. In fact, I met with her after they were typed up again a second time, just to look at them and say, Peg, do I have it right? She says, you got all of it right. There's one you need to change, so I changed one. That became side one of the story. And as we know, there's three sides to every story. So then I've been working with that document with my staff every day since then to get side two of the story. And it it's uncovering a lot of things, a lot of very interesting things, and there's some obvious process changes that have to happen. But once I have side two, I'm gonna meet with Peg again and show her side two. And to together, she and I, I expect, are gonna say, okay, now let's see side three. There's three sides. Now we see the third side of the story. When that is done, when that's identified, now we know exactly what to change. And that's the work product that I'm hoping to present to council. It will not be ready by Friday. But it will be ready soon, and I I would say it'd be ready before the next council meeting. But I would like a chance to
Would be ready?
The work product, you were you were in my office today with the whole group, and we were looking at one item of the six that Peg presented to me. And it had to deal with the notice of violations and the same certification number for the certified mailing. That was just one item of this page, of this half a dozen items. That was one item. We we spent an hour on that today. And we we agreed, we need to meet again and go over this again. Matter of fact, we set a meeting for with you on Thursday. And I don't know if you've accepted it yet, but to continue this discussion on Thursday with code enforcement and me and everybody to finish going through these items. Once we finish going through these items, I'm hoping we're done on Thursday, and I'm hoping to meet with Peg on Friday and get that third side of the story, so she can see exactly what's going on. There are some interesting things happening here. I don't think anybody's deliberately doing anything malicious, but there's some, there's some things that need to change. Yes, for sure. So I don't think we'll be ready for council to hear anything by Friday. I'd be glad to meet with Peg because I think Peg and I are gonna be able to solve this. And I think when we're done, Peg and I are gonna come to this council and say, yeah, this is this is the whole deal. This is the real deal. This is what needs to change. I'd like that to be the process. That would be my hope and goal, that Peg and I can come to you together with a report on this about what we've done. I've got confidence in in Peg Schaller, and she knows this, and I've told her this. I don't, I have complete trust that what she's saying is accurate and real, and she has that same confidence in me. And I think working with Peg and my staff, we're gonna get there. We're gonna get to the bottom of all of these, all of these issues. And together, I think Peg and I can present something to this council, that this council will go, okay, that makes sense. And that's what I'm asking council to do.
So that the seven, the the items that we tasked are can, th- those will be, which one?
Several, several of them already have been finished.
Okay.
Several of them have been finished.
Can we end it? My hope is that we would go through that list.
Yeah.
And if that's a byproduct of
Yeah.
fulfilling one of them, and I and I know it is, great. But from my understanding, none of them were completed.
And that's not true. There there are a few of them that are completed, gotten to the bottom of.
I think that this council will have to stay that it's completed. I understand what you're saying, but we requested. And so it was, it was written that things were completed last time, and I'm saying it wasn't. So maybe we 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 say it differently due to the changes. My hope is that we can start locking those off, and I know some of the ones down at the bottom about recommendations, those do take time. I get that. But we we met today. We, I did talk to you, I talked to Officer Palmer, had had the chance to talk with Todd throughout the week. And all those things are true. I do appreciate being heard, and I want to be heard. But after that meeting, when I processed that, you gotta realize, I sat down and I'm being read through a monitor stuff. I haven't been provided anything, and it's fast. And I go in and I look and I look at how much time that's went by. I think it's time we bring the items back so that we can say, yes, those were complete. So at a minimum, it would be good to meet this Friday or Monday to go through what's, what you're saying is complete, because
You mean as a council?
Yes, and to receive the Fillmore, yeah, because we could knock those off the list. I don't think it makes sense to get them all done and then present this grand package to say they're all done. I think some of them are somewhat dependent. And those first ones are the easiest wins. They're essentially asking, give us all of the data. And we don't have all the data to this date. I mean, if he had a case, our city attorney, how would he get all the data? And and we've talked about the ability, we can't get data that we can rely on. And I don't think it's the answers that I'm hearing on why these don't exist. What I'm saying today that I did not say to you are not acceptable to me. Can they be changed? Yes. I don't think they would be acceptable to this council. And so unless it makes no sense for you to meet, in my opinion, one-on-one with each one of us, that's an hour per meeting, that's five hours. Let's all sit down together and go through the action items that were ordered and break it into Fillmore and Jackson. Fillmore should start with the engineering report, and before any actions or permits or any of that stuff starts pursuing forward, I want to make sure we can rely on Kim Lee Horn's data. Because they were one engineering firm, and I want to see that it that it makes sense and that it works. Today, we're not, we're not in that position, and that's done. And so whatever we can knock off that list, let's do it, and I don't want to wait till the next meeting. This is a major issue. It's been a threat. It's been a weakness. It's been code and who's gonna fix code enforcement? It's been the same group with two to three different processes, right? And now we're talking about changing the process again. I'm backing up going, what's the process we follow? And and we cannot demonstrate it today. That makes me feel pretty hopeless on all the times I've been around BSNA. None of it was really one hundred percent reliable and accurate. And the effect that has on public access in records is awful. It had the effect of limiting someone's ability to access records. Come by, ask me for it. She did, and what was sent to her was not. That's, that's stop. And that's what I want to say to the council. I I I have hope. I share the same hope as Todd and Dave and all, that it's going to fix. But we got some hot stuff right here that I am not gonna glaze over and go, well, we'll just focus on the solution. Why did those things happen? Why, when they had knowledge of those issues? Todd, I brought this to you two years ago. I am delighted that you and Peg understood, but did I fail to communicate Peg's issues when I'm literally forwarding her emails and her words? Did I fail to communicate the Hearst issues? I don't think I did. I think we were all well aware. I might have not been taken seriously or what, but that's what the paper trail says, and it's a serious issue. A ser-, but it wasn't treated like that. And today, April, we'll get to it. I'm saying whatever else we're working on is not important, because we got some red flags. And I am not gonna turn my head. I want to see it through, and I want to see it fixed. And until we can say, go into BSNA, you can lean on that data. You could, that's data you can make decisions in. You this is a us versus them that I don't want to be. I've been, I've heard it stated, it's this, we're on the same team. It's us versus them. Then why is it that when the public asks for records or when Mayor Pro Tim or any one of us asks for records, that the city's the only one that has those records? And now I'm learning what was provided at times wasn't wasn't actually what happened. That's an issue of basic competence, one. We blame software. We blamed a magistrate. Get rid of the enforcement board. Well, we got the magistrate. That's what we were told. We were hitting this hard back in twenty nineteen. Not, we still today have the same issues on the same property back when it was Dottie's Bar, the same issues in that P and Z board meeting on Fillmore Avenue, where those residents are in here screaming about the flooding on the property and the issues and the building inspections that were done. What's the process? I'm nervous about the developments that are happening right now, because I don't understand it. And I don't think it's right. And I didn't get in here to you know, go along, get along. I really came in to say, we are all on the same team, but I'm going to be as direct as I can. And it's been long enough for me to fix these things. And so, please, I'll include this on the agenda as my request perpetual until these issues are resolved.
Will do.
That's a no-brainer to me, and of course, we gotta keep all the balloons in the air, but there are some balloons we should let fall if if that's what's holding it up. So trust is what's at stake right now. And its values, and as a shepherd of our values and steward, we all are, I I I it does not make sense to me. And I think we are going to need to take some corrective action in the short period that is something this council believes is actually gonna make a difference. And my hope is before any of that happens, we can say, council, you can lean on the 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 data in there is accurate. So I'm frustrated. I'm not here to say it's all bad. I know some things got done. But when I go through the building inspection process that was filed in the for a report, I don't, I don't know what boxes we're checking. But when I see that vents are being installed on roofs, the gooseneck vents, and they're coming to clean out dryer vents because of fire hazards, and I'm hearing neighbors tell me that why was, this is a non-code compliant vent cover that went on the roof. It's gonna be a fire hazard, and well, did our building official check that? Just little stuff to you walking up on the property going, why are the power lines overhead? And then one neighbor is literally has an issue with the same vent on another property, and they pull it off, and it literally has the instructions stuck in it. Where's our inspector? And you talk, and literally the instructions talk about fire hazard. I mean, what's the irony of that? Is that the city in building official and inspections, people are paying money for inspections. Are we delivering? I, the evidence I'm seeing is absolutely not. People are paying and being, I believe, not treated consistently on code enforcement. The way that we've responded on code enforcement is not consistent with the unknown procedures that we follow, unless it's the decision tree. And today, I'll feel a lot better when you can say, here it is, here's the process we followed, here's where we didn't, where we misstepped, and the reason why we missed up, and and we're going to fix it. But that's it. I um, I am tunnel vision on on this more and more every day because it becomes a bigger issue for me. And I do regret not putting this on earlier so that I had a fresh brain to talk about it. So thank you all for hearing me out. It's taken a significant amount of time, and I know all of us in here has lost a lot of sleep probably on this. And I know it's not a lack of effort. But I'm past the effort part. We need results on one of the items, and if you do have one, great. That should be presented to this council, and it should have been presented today to say, guys, we got three of them done. Let me show them to you. Thank you. Council, uh, meeting on Monday, Friday. Both are available for you. If you're willing to meet, if you can't, I understand. Okay. I can send some dates out and propose, but I would settle on Friday, and if we can't do Friday, we can do Monday. Monday? Okay.
What time are you talking?
What, is the PM better for you, the the afternoon?
Well, it depends, because I have, I have appointments that I have to go to.
Okay. Okay. Well, I I think if you have a suggested date that would work or a time that would work for you, maybe we can work around what's best for you. Um, and I don't expect you to necessarily figure that out right now, but I can say um, I'm willing to meet Friday and Monday. We can tentatively say, let's shoot for Monday, and then as Councilmember Davis has a chance, she can maybe steer us in a in a time that would work. Obviously, I would want to make sure, um, there's a lot of folks. When I talk about all the people in the room for this first one, no. But that's it. I think city manager would be crucial and whoever he thinks he wants there too, so.
And I apologize, I, when you, when the council asked for Kim Lee Horn to give a report, I assumed you meant a written document. I didn't understand that you meant you wanted a presented report at a city council meeting. I didn't understand that at the time.
No, you na-, the report was good, but we had a report that they presented. I think being able to go through the, well, then if if council have you, if you've had a chance to read the uh, report, I would say, read it, and I have questions, and we can come and talk through the questions together. Let's, and if Kim Lee Horn could be there.
We can ask him to be there. It's not part of their scope. It wasn't part of their, they might charge more for that, is what we're saying.
I would, I would say that they will charge more for that. They'll charge their hourly, um, if it's of any use. If there's a collection of questions specifically about the report that can be addressed, I have, I can do my best to answer it. Their report is objective and observational in nature, as is any other engineering report, so nothing that there's essentially no extrapolation that can be made from the report. What's in the report is what was observed and documented from an engineering point of view. So I I'm happy to try to speak to it prior to reaching out to Kim Lee Horn. But if a presentation is what's recommended, there will also be additional time required, which means additional hourly rates to prepare that presentation. Come here, including travel time, be here, present it, answer questions, just to kind of lay it out what that looks like from a budgeting point of view.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to whatever you would present. I just think it would be crucial to have them here, and I think it'd be worth the money uh, to to do that. As far as the uh, former city engineer, John Picar, can can we ask him to be here as well?
Certainly ask, yeah. Yeah. It would help if we had a date and a time, though, for both engineers.
Well, Mon- Monday would be great.
Afternoon, morning, evening?
I think we're all saying to be determined.
Need to be here. I cannot be here Monday even.
Okay, I think Monday, uh, we can still meet, um, without the city attorney. And we, uh, I will keep meeting, and then we'll set the next meeting until till you can show up. But I I want to see us make progress here, because I think we got some bad things happening. And I think they've been going on a long time. I'm not saying it's bad people. I'm not saying it's bad processes, but the outcome, the result is bad. It's putting people's life in danger. There's life safety issues. There's flooding issues. We're saying we're doing things. We're not backing up that we're actually doing those things. And it's been very difficult to get records in this city, and so I will come in on Monday. If we can work through the issues without the city attorney, that's great.
I was gonna say, Anthony, you would suggest that you are here for this?
I mean, it's kind, I I would, I would suggest, based on my last statement, I'd probably want to be here, um, and I think the I mean, it's kind, I, I would, I would suggest based on my last statement, I probably want to be here. Um, and I think the council probably would. I mean, but that's your call. Um, I'm available Monday, except in the evening. I'm available Friday. After 12. Available Tuesday morning. I'm available all day Wednesday. Um, but Monday evening is.
Monday? Okay.
What time Monday are you available? What time in the afternoon? About 3:30?
Earlier would be better, like a.
One?
One, certainly.
Monday, Monday at one, that's the.
Let, let's do what we can at one on Monday with who we have.
It's, um, April 22nd at 1:00 PM.
I would love for our city attorney to be here. I know it, it limits us, right? Uh, in, in some of the things that, that we can do. But I think we can make a lot of progress around those issues. We can understand the engineering report, work with Lexi and the team, get, get our hands around that.
Do we have consensus mayor to, um, authorize the additional expenditure to have Kim Lee Horn there to make a presentation?
That would be to include creating a presentation prior. So, it would be more than just their time spent traveling to and from the city and time here. And I would need to let them know that. As soon as possible so they have time to prepare it.
If they're available.
If they're available.
I don't, like, I, if they're available, no matter what, if you're willing to, and, and able to help. And having them as, as a phone resource, it may not be needed. I, I didn't, I didn't say, I just think it would be valuable. To, to understand the words that they wrote. From their observations. Now, if we wrote that report or the executive summary, I'd want to talk with us. But their approach and, and Lexi, I think you're, we're lucky to have you to be i- in your, uh, credentials and, and position. There's no doubt that we will get answers. And so if, if you don't think they're needed under your pressure, then, then we don't need to move down that. Um, I, I don't.
Lexi was prepared to give, um, a, a breakdown of it, uh, more in layman's terms. She was working on that document. She probably even has it ready today.
Yes.
And. We can go with that.
I'd like to start before we start spending who knows how much money. I would rather start with Lexi.
Let, let me make a suggestion on the finance side of it. If this is going to be some type of set of meetings, like the mayor says, a process possibly taking engineers in, whatever. I really don't believe we'd have to affect the normal budget. I will tell you right now, mayor, this is, and this is what this money's for. I have $230,000 in ARPA money that could be used. Now, I know it's not going to cost that much, but if we can give this a name. I'm just making a suggestion on what this process is. Engineers involved, lawyer involved, uh, the, the meetings, whatever. Let's give it a name like a project and we, we can set up a GL account and we'll charge, well, we don't have to set up a GL account. We could, we could use the ARPA money. What? That's, this is like community needs.
But I mean, it's an expert.
This isn't.
Report, so.
What's that?
Yeah, it's an expert report. Why wouldn't the council want to hear from the expert that wrote the report?
Oh, oh, yeah, that's.
With all, you know, due respect to Lexi's summary, I mean, it's an expert report.
Yes.
Whether they're here in person, right?
Yes.
Or on the phone to answer questions. Council has questions, they should hear from the author of this expert report.
And the report is already paid for, correct? That was approved by.
Yeah, I'm saying anything else. I'm saying anything outside of that.
It's money well spent, in my humble opinion, having dealt with a lot of experts in my day.
I'm just saying anything outside that, that becomes an additional expense. These are the things. That the city could benefit from in the financial sense. That's all I'm saying. Otherwise, we cut into our existing budgets, our contingency, whatever. So, just a suggestion.
Mayor, I would encourage the council to, to make this meeting as, as productive as possible. To come prepared with specific questions. If you have specific life, health, safety issues that you have. I know you mentioned some, some vent issues. Um, and we'll have our building official there. And I think you might find some of these issues that you've heard about may not be city issues. They may be private property and developer owner issues. But that's why I'd like, I'd like to cut through a lot of that if we can. Um, but please, please come prepared and we'll, we'll, um, we'll, we'll work, work through the list one by one. Looking forward to it.
The life safety was more related to the Jackson Avenue.
We can have our fire marshal there. I don't know if you remember, I did draft a memo.
I do.
After speaking to the fire marshal, the building, the building official and the, um, city code enforcement addressing this exact issue. Um, so we can certainly be prepared to respond to that, uh, to that memo. Look forward to it.
Um, in the spirit of preparation, just to clarify, the engineers who are here tonight, uh, neither of those individuals is the engineer who prepared the report.
Thank you.
Mayor, is this a workshop meeting or a special meeting?
Special meeting. I, I want the ability to take action. Who was the engineer on, who did that?
His name's Kyle Cosby. He still works for Kim Lee Horn. He's just neither of the individuals who were here today.
And I totally knew that. It was a possibility.
Just like, just so when you see a new face, when they do show up to the meeting, that you're not like, wait a second, that's not.
Wasn't Scott.
The guys who came tonight, yeah.
Okay. Kyle Cross- Cosby?
Correct.
Okay. My last question. If we really, um. What authority does the council have to compel someone to meet with us? Subpoena? Investigate for investigation.
So. Theoretically, yes. I mean, if it's a formal, um, you know, investigation. Um, I believe the charter may have mentioned subpoena powers. I'm not, I can't recall off the top of my head. Some charters do. But to enforce it, it would require, um, a court. The council doesn't have the ability to enforce and compel attendance other than issuing a subpoena and then having to go argue. Uh, to a judge that it, that the attendant should be compelled. Um, you know, in, in some instances, you would likely issue administrative subpoena. And then you would get some sort of, um, motion for protective order from the person that, um, who, who receives the subpoena. If they don't want to attend.
Thank you. I, uh. I did, I was r- reading and that, that makes sense. The judges and, and, uh, would, for enforcement, need to get involved. In practice. And, um, I, I say that, uh, and ask that because. When we're dealing with people that can't be reached or, uh, former or this, like the former city manager. It's to try and. Figure out what happened. There was a lot of responses of former. No longer here. Um, as I understand, it's this, it was that engineer. I don't know. You'll have to ask them. Go back through all those questions on Fillmore. The answers that I read that we provided to those property owners. Was basically, we, we can't help you or you're going to have to wait and see. And so. Talking to those, and there's people that are not coming to the meetings and they want to meet. One-on-one and off the record. And I don't want to do that either. And so, and that's I, the contractors. And so, or the contractor. Um, that was it. Monday works. Uh, it sounds like it to do something in the afternoon.
I have that we have a special meeting planned for April 22nd at 1:00 PM and there's council consensus for that, mayor.
Thank you. Um, if that needs to change, I think we have a, a process now that can help. 1:00 PM, April 22nd? Okay. City clerk, do you need a formal vote on that or consensus work for you?
Consensus is fine.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Uh, any other things or reports?
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, on, uh. Let me get back to my notes here. On, uh, March 28th, I attended the Cocoa Beach, uh, Chamber of Commerce legislative wrap-up. And a discussion occurred on House Bill 1365. Uh, regarding the restrictions on homeless camping on city properties. And there's, there's a lot of discussion on it, but I did pick up some additional information that I wanted to just pass out to everybody just. Because we, we may be forced to do something sometime in the future. And I think any information we can have in our back pocket might help us in the future, so.
Thank you. We'll review. Anything else, council member Willis?
No, it's time to go.
Yes. Any other council members, city staff?
I have one update, very quick. I'll make it very quick. Um, I will be attending the Florida Department of Emergency Management, uh, terrorism training this week. There's a workshop going on in Viera. So, I will be attending that just so, you know.
Thank you. The manager, city attorney, thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, one, one point. Um, I've been asked by the Florida League of Cities to write a friends of the court brief in a very important appellate, this, uh, case. For the, uh, US, um, appellate court in Atlanta regarding, um, public, um, public input during council meetings. So, if the council doesn't mind, I may use City of Cape Canaveral, um, in drafting this brief. I, I'm. I'm just asking that, that council's okay with that, just, just in case I, I need to give examples or something like that, but.
Thank you for, obviously you could, but I appreciate it, yes.
Hopefully it's a positive example.
Well, I'm not. Just in case. I'm just asking, I'm just, you know. Just in my capacity and experience over the years as city attorney, I mean, that's. May need to rely on some of that, but I may mention, um, some of my city clients.
That's pretty cool, I guess, to write.
Yeah, no.
Opportunity, congrats.
Yeah, I've done that on several occasions on behalf of the league and the International Municipal League. Um, so. You know, it's a nice privilege, but it's an important issue.
Hopefully you send it to us.
Mayor, I'd like to make an announcement.
Yes.
Today, our Zach Eichols was interviewed on NPR, um, along with a Harvard, um, professor. And they were talking about resiliency. And it is a, um, it, it's just, it's, it's nice to step back and really sometimes we have to focus on. Getting our hands dirty, day-to-day stuff. But it's also, it's important to kind of celebrate those wins that we have. And, and Zach and Lexi bring a lot, bring a lot of wins with them. And, um, I'll let you know when we have a specific date on when that piece is going to be run on NPR. Uh, it's not a state, it's a, it is a national NPR piece. Um, so it's very cool for the city. And, um. Do you have anything to add to that, Lexi?
It'll air on WFME about halfway, about mid-May. So, WFME is the larger station out of Orlando. It's not out of our little local hub, WFIT. Um, so really cool. And, uh, I'll just add that that's like a professional goal of mine, so. I'm a little jealous, but also super excited and proud of Zach.
And what is it on? What's the, the topic?
It's on, uh, resilience, policy, infrastructure, um, some of the stuff that's going into, um, just, you know, and every level of government. What's needed to, to make sure that we're, we're ready for, for, we're future-ready, ready for the future.
What was the date on that?
No, no date yet, but they're looking at mid-May. It'll be out of WFME, which I think is 90.7. So, let me just plug that again. Mid-May, WFME, 90.7. Anyone who's listening?
Yes. Okay, any other? Comments? Thank you all. Seeing none, meeting adjourned.